Good afternoon and welcome to our Glendale City Council workshop. This meeting is for council members to review and discuss important issues, projects, and future council meeting agenda items. It's a work-study session only and allows the council to hear input from city staff. No action will be taken at this workshop, and there will not be an opportunity for public comment. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
Hey Lauren, how are you?
Good afternoon. Welcome to Glendale City Council Workshop Session April 25th, 2023. Happy birthday to my daughter today. Meeting is called order. Conduct a roll call starting with Councilmember Eldama.
Here.
Councilmember Hugh.
Here.
Councilmember Melner.
Here.
Councilmember Tomachoff.
Here.
Councilmember Turner. Vice Mayor Clerk.
Here.
I'm present. Councilmember Turner, if he comes in, if you'll take note if he comes in, thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and if you'll put us into item number one, please.
Fiscal year 2023-24 budget workshop.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. We have four items today on our agenda. The first one will be led by Levi Gibson, our Budget and Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. We are here today for our fifth and final budget workshop. We've had four previous workshops. After this, we'll have three voting meetings: tentative budget adoption on May 9th, final budget adoption and the property tax levy on June 13th, and the property tax adoption on June 27th. With that, our agenda for today is we'll provide follow-up items from April 6th workshop: changes in budget, fiscal year 23-24 operating budget, capital improvement plan, transfers budget, and the total budget. Our follow-up items from the April 6th workshop is there was a question regarding how many sole-source contracts we had. There are currently 15 sole-source contracts. We also, the Westmark was increased to, the Westmark membership was increased to 20,000. That will be absorbed by the non-departmental. Additionally, there were a request for org charts for the changes that were made, and those were emailed to council previously. There was also a question regarding the arts fund. This slide represents the current fiscal year '22 actuals, plus fiscal year '23 through '25 estimate and budgeted. So, the beginning fund balance in the current year was 1.7 million. Currently, there's about 482,000 in revenues, and operating expenditures were $318,000. There were no CIP expenditures in the current year. So, the estimated ending fund balance in the current year is 1.9 million. With the number of capital improvement projects that we're doing, we're forecasting that the fund balance will increase for the arts fund going forward. And after fiscal year '25, we'll have approximately $2.3 million within the arts fund.
Is there more on this?
You what?
I was asking if there was more on this arts fund presentation.
With that, we'd be happy to take any questions.
That's what I was here. Pardon me for arriving in the nick of time, but I missed a few said, well, I'm assuming in part this relates to my question in previous meetings about the $2 million sweep from several years ago. And I'd asked for staff to come back with a way in which that $2 million could be replaced over time. Is it, is this just a projection of what is going to happen going forward if we do nothing about that $2 million, or is there included in this some replacement of that $2 million?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, this is a projection if we do nothing. That will show that the fund balance would continue to grow. It's our recommendation that, since fund balance is growing and not being drawn down, that we make no changes at this point, but that is also up to the council at any time they can have the ability to come to consensus and vote to move that $2 million back to the arts fund.
It is my distinct recollection that there was a consensus of the council for staff to bring back a plan in which we could replenish that $2 million that had been swept, which is not what this appears to be. And, I mean, the council ultimately carries all budget decisions, that's no surprise. But the council consensus was for staff to bring back a plan on how we could replace that $2 million, and which then would give us more money in our capital fund, but just the fact that we're not spending it is part of the issue, or not in the capital fund and our arts fund. That's the issue, is we're not spending it. We need to be perhaps doing more in our community for the art because of the policy we have about setting aside this money for art, that it kind of inherently speaks to the fact that we would be spending it. But we're basically, we've hamstrung our arts commission by keeping them broke, and we, and we're not doing anything about it other than what would normally be coming down the pipeline anyway. It's kind of like, you know, if you borrow money from the bank, you don't get to say, "Well, I'm not going to pay that back because I'll be paying you more on this note later." We still owe that money, in essence, to the arts fund, to our arts policy, to our citizens that, that are supporting this program. And I'm disappointed, frankly, City Manager, that the council consensus has been ignored. Consensus was bring back a plan on how to replenish, a way in which we could replenish that $2 million, and this is not that plan.
Mr. Phelps.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Turner, that is the plan. If there are four people on the council, we can, through the budgeting process, you can authorize a movement from general fund reserve funds into the arts fund. All it takes is four members of the council to do that. That's the plan. There's no other, there's no other way to do it, I mean, other than what it takes action by the council to instruct the Budget and Finance Department to replace that. Our recommendation is, is to, until there's a project where it looks like the arts fund is running short, at any time in the budget process or during a year, a council could say to the budget team, "We want to move money from general fund reserve into the arts fund based on a project that's, that now maybe is identified, that isn't identified today." But you can move money. All it takes is to say, "It'll be $2 million less you would have either in your reserve fund or available for other council priorities," whether it be, you know, capital improvement plan for parks, streets, roads, whatever. It's really a policy decision. It's not a plan issue. It's a policy issue based on the consensus of the council.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mr. Manager, I would not insult anybody on this council by telling them that they perhaps don't realize that we can move money from our reserve fund to any of our funds anytime that we want to. We all know we have that power. We don't need to be told that. It was out of respect for process, your staff, and in, to some degree, you, that I ask that staff come up with a plan. Three council members agreed with me, if not all, all of them. I know we had a consensus to allow staff to come up with a plan on how to accomplish this goal that the consensus of the council had, which was to replenish the arts fund, to come up with a plan on how to replenish it, not how to ignore the loss in it and to continue going forward. But what you've done is, you've turned what I was trying to do respectfully into disrespect for me and the rest of the council by not doing it. So, it's, I don't think it's any responsible way to budget for council members just to throw out motions during the process saying, "I wish, you know, I want to move $2 million here, I want to move $3 million there, I want $500,000 here." I don't think that's the responsible way to do it. And unfortunately, management doesn't come to council in the budget process and ask what our priorities are on an individual basis and try to see if there's consensus and incorporate it into the whole process. I was trying to get that accomplished from up here on the dais over a period of time when we had a window to do it. So, I'm, I'm disappointed as heck, is, you know, just one more time, and I again feel disrespected. It's, this has become, this has become a continuing problem that I seem to be having with the city manager, and I know the council is aware of it. I think it's time that our residents become aware of it too. Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, so again, the charter asks the city manager's office to propose an operating and capital budget to this council every year. It's in the charter, and it's the city manager's recommendation to the elected body. At that point, which we've been doing through a variety of workshops, we've been receiving feedback from the council and at times getting consensus from the council to make changes. For example, at our last workshop, it was, there was a discussion about providing protective gear for our firefighters. We had the discussion at the workshop. A consensus was given to the, to the city manager's office to come back with a plan, which we will be talking about here shortly. We've included that in our revised proposal. All I'm saying is not trying to be disrespectful. This is the city manager's proposed budget to the council. If you want to have the money replenished back into the arts fund, all I need to hear is there are four people at the council that said, "Mr. City Manager, we would like to see, when we, when we look at the first operating budget in May, we would like to have $2 million taken from," it obviously has to come from reserve funds, unless you want to say, "We want you to reduce funding from a department and put that money there." It's, I'm not trying to be flippant. It's, this is my proposed budget. Our recommendation is, at any time the council has the ability to move funds, generally within a budget year. We, what we heard was, and what I heard at the meeting was, is tell us how we can do that. And what I'm saying is, this would be the time to do it. If, if there are four people that would like to see the arts fund either replenished at one time, or you could give instruction, say, "We're going to try to do this over the next four years, so let's put $500,000 this year." We will make that adjustment and we will put it in. It'll be based on the consensus of the council. So, not trying to be disrespectful, Mr. Turner, or Councilmember Turner, I'm just saying, this is the proposed budget that we had. You asked for a plan. The plan is pretty straightforward from that perspective, in that all it takes is just consensus of moving funds from unreserved into a dedicated area, in this case, the arts fund.
Councilmember Eldama.
Thank you, Mayor.
Well, you didn't have the floor, sure.
I didn't return the floor to you.
Okay, well, Councilmember Eldama, go ahead.
I yield to the council member if that's necessary.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay, we're, we're not going to let this get out of hand, okay?
Well, it hasn't yet.
There's a discussion, everybody wants to have something to say, so I'll allow you to go again. Councilmember Eldama, you'll be next. Councilmember Tomachoff, you're following.
I would think that the definition of being out of hand is when somebody has the floor that you ignore him and move on. There was, there was a consensus of the council, just as your example, where there was a consensus of the council to provide the funding necessary to override the manager's recommendation to put four protective vests on, on engines and ladder companies. It was, we overrode that and said, "We're, we want every firefighter that's going to be put in that situation to have a custom-fitted vest." I don't know that we attached a dollar amount to it, but we certainly said, "That is the goal." There was a consensus up here to replenish the fund. We wanted staff, we were just giving staff the courtesy of providing us a way. We're not interested in upsetting the budgeting apple cart. We're trying to work with staff and the management. And the consensus existed. It was ignored. I brought it up again a few weeks ago. It's come back to us today, and it's still been, it's still been ignored again. And you may not feel that you're being disrespectful, or feel that you're being flippant, and you may not be intending to be, but I can guarantee you, it certainly comes across that, like that to me, and I've heard that from residents that have been watching our meetings. Thank you. I yield.
Councilmember Eldama.
The, the council member asked for a plan. Do you have a written plan in this document that we're not at that point yet?
Again, Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Eldama.
Mr. Phelps, is there or is there not? That's, yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, there is?
Yes.
So, can, can we, Mayor, can we get to that plan, or are we going to wait? Because if there is a plan, and I want to hear it and see it, because this, what I'm looking at is not a plan. This is an overview, but if you're saying there's a plan, I will stop and I want to listen to the plan. You're saying, yes, there is.
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Eldama, what we're saying is that it's a very simple process. If this, if the council chooses to replenish the arts fund, what we would need to hear is four people to say, when we roll out our budget in May, on May 9th budget meeting, or, excuse me, council workshop and meeting, that it shows and it reflects a repayment of up to the $2 million, whatever the council decides to do. We would then put that into the, the budget. The, the budget process, at any time, four council members can get consensus to insert or make modifications or changes in the budget. So, the, the plan is just, it's your priority. If the council chooses to prioritize repaying back the arts fund, then we just, you know, let the staff know, "We will incorporate that into there." But I don't know how else to say there's a plan. It just, it just really, it's four people saying, "This is a priority for them individually," which then creates a consensus that the city replenish the arts fund up into the full $2 million. You could do any amount between 0 to the $2 million money, and then we would incorporate that into the plan.
Mayor, I'm going to continue here. So, that's the frustrating piece, and that's what the council member is frustrated with, is that there was a consensus for you to go back and return a plan, a written plan. If you weren't going to have a plan and only address the process and protocol and the legislative power that we have as individuals and as a body should have been communicated to Mr. Turner, to the council member, either in writing an email or to himself. There is no plan. Why was it swept? What impacts does it have? What possible impacts are there if we remove it from the, from, from the fund balance? What other options do we have? That all should be a written plan. And if the council member requested that, nobody on this council, I remember, denied that, that request. And so, oftentimes, that happens to me when I ask for something, I don't get it back. I get a verbal, and I'll agree to that, and, okay, I'm fine with that. But if there's the plan in here, you're saying, "Yes, I, I haven't scrolled down, I'm taking your word for it, there's a plan in here." Or are you referring to the plan as the overview that this gentleman here referred to?
Mayor, members of council, Councilmember, so one, a number of questions there. I wasn't here when the council swept the original money. I believe that was back during the, the budget down. What we heard, and I'll be glad to go back and listen to the minutes, what we heard was not a consensus of the council to move money to replenish the fund. What we were asked to do is provide a path forward for how that could be done. That's the plan. How could the city council, how could the city replenish the arts fund for the money that was swept out prior? What I'm saying is, the plan would be just, all it takes for that plan to be implemented would be four members of the council to say, "This is what we would like to have in the budget," and we would do that. I mean, there's, because again, it could be any amount, it could be a phased-in approach over a number of years, it could be all at one time, it could be zero. But what we heard at the request of Councilmember Turner was to come back with a plan. There was not a consensus to move $2 million.
Correct.
From reserve funds into the fund. It was about a plan. And all I'm saying is, it's, it's not complicated in that regard. If the council would like to have any amount replenished back into there, we will make those adjustments and, and come back like we do after every workshop and have the next budget that you see be reflective of those changes.
Mayor, and here's my final comments on this, this issue. If a, a plan was requested, you shall return a, a plan based on the consensus of four. That's the power of the legislative body. You did not do that. I'll go back and do my homework and request through the, through the clerk's office, the video or the minute, so I can see firsthand what was asked for. But in your words, you're saying, "There was a plan asked for," and look, I totally understand what we need to do here to move money to do any policy changes. It's the majority of the council. You were asked for a plan, I don't see a plan. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachoff.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go off topic before I get back to the, the plan. On the slide number four, the 15 sole-source procurement contracts, could we get, please, at least, I would like to see a list of who those contracts are with. I don't know what the rest of the council would like to know who, who, I've only, since I've been here, I think only seen one. So, I don't know who else we're, we've sole-source contracts with, but I'd like to know who, who that is. The second thing is the org charts. I only got an org chart for Public Affairs and Communications. I did not get a, a city organizational chart. And I know there's been some restructuring of how organizations, so I'd like to have the org chart for the city of Glendale, of who, how the organization is structured, not just the reorganization of those two departments. Now, back to the plan. I, I mean, I think, you know, we don't need a plan to know that, that money can be transferred. I mean, I think that's, that's what, that goes without saying. But I mean, I would like to know, like, what had, what was foregone, what art projects have not been, I think that's kind of, at least maybe that was the way I understood, is that what have we, our, our arts program has not been as robust as it would have been had it had been properly funded all this time. So, I mean, we have a dedicated arts person that's a part of our economic development. I mean, what, you know, art assets could we add to the city to enhance the sports and entertainment district, or would it be something built into the, the arena or whatever? But I'm just saying, I mean, there's got to be some ideas of where we could invest in art around the city that would, you know, improve the quality of, of cultural experiences for our residents. So, I think that's kind of, at least that's what I was expecting to see, is that where could we, what could we do if we, if we allocated this other $2 million? And the idea of moving the money back into the arts fund, I think, is the right thing to do, because in the event that we, there's an economic downturn, and I mean, this one-time money that we're getting is not going to go on forever, and at some point, it's probably not going to be something maybe possible to move the money back into the art fund. Right now, it is, it is possible to move the money back into the art fund and not really hurt anything that we're already doing. Our revenues are coming in high because for, you know, the, the, all of the activity out in the industrial area, that is a result of, you know, people who, who served long before us, that were smart enough to annex all of that land, at least at the time, to protect Lew Air Force Base, but if that hadn't have been done, none of that would even be the city of Glendale, and then the people who also fought hard to have the investment in the 303. So, we're fortunate to be in the situation that we're in right now, but this isn't, this isn't a forever thing. I mean, these revenues are not going to continue, that's going to be built out, and, and the money's not going to be coming in like it is. So, if the money's put back in the art fund, then it secures that the money is in there, and it will be spent on art around the city. So, I, at least that was the way I understood, and I thought that's what I was agreeing to when I agreed. Maybe I misunderstood what everybody else was agreeing to, but I thought that's what I was giving consensus for, is for staff to engage with our, our, we have a person totally dedicated to art in the city of Glendale, and to sit down and, and come back with some ideas on what could we do with, with another $2 million in our arts fund. Thank you.
Mr. Phelps.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, so again, I didn't hear that part of the request, but we can certainly, we can certainly dive deeper down. Remember that we've told the council is that currently, we're going through a master planning for our arts program right now, so that's a, it's a process that the Arts Commission has engaged with. And so, one of the reasons why we, you know, we think it's really good to get through that process, the Arts Commission is really your body that you appoint, then we have an administrator that helps support that, that individual. Again, we can, we can accelerate art expenditures, that really is a council decision, but we'll, but just want to remind you, we are going through the master planning process for the arts and updating that, which, I don't know, Jesse, do you know when that will be done?
Mayor, can I ask a question while she comes up?
Pretty much there.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Phelps, Mayor and council, the, as we mentioned during our budget hearing, the master plan process has just now kicked off, so it's going to take about a year, and it is our recommendation that we take that master plan process, that is a public process, as well as a process that will engage the council and the Arts Commission, to be able to get that direction that would actually better support where, say, $2 million being put back into the fund over time could be spent. Can I ask a question? Thank you. So, wouldn't it be easier, more, make more sense when you're making a master plan to understand your budget? I mean, so knowing whether there's an additional $2 million allocated to art or not, wouldn't that be an important part of the master plan? Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, it certainly can be part of that engagement, really, from a master planning process. It's not just based on what funding is in there, it's also understanding lots of different options available, so it's really providing that direction of what type of art is appropriate in the community. You know, we have lots of different types. We have portable art, we have art projects, we have grants for performing arts, so really it's more providing what is appropriate for the community. It's talking about art and private development. So, the budget component is one piece of it, that can certainly be part of this engagement and this conversation as we move through the master plan. I, I think this is a really good time, Mayor, if I could continue to actually make that commitment then, because, I mean, budget is always an important part of, of, you know, I mean, how much, how much art, you know, I mean, you're, obviously, with an additional $2 million, you could do a lot more than, 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 and I just feel like that we should make that, I felt like we had made that commitment, but I think we should ratify that commitment today, that we are going to make that commitment to art in the city of Glendale and move that money and make that clear, and that'd be part of the master plan, so that everybody working on the master plan understands what the, what the, what we would have available. Doesn't mean we have to spend it all, but what we would have available for moving forward with an arts master plan. Thank you.
Mr. Melner, coming back to you.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question for staff on the, the estimated fund balance. Is there a requirement by the arts department, or the folks that are in charge of that, to keep that at a certain level?
Mayor, members of the council, no, the requirement is to put the 1% for the arts in there, not to have any particular balance.
Okay, so, this is what I guess I'm a little misunderstanding, is because, I mean, we have almost a $2 million balance in '22, a 1.7 in '23, and a $2 million balance in '24. This is basically money that the Arts Council, or the Arts Commission, is not spending, or whoever's in charge of that is not spending, because they haven't come up with any programs or any ideas, or I don't know why that isn't there. But I'm looking at them, and then we're saying, "Well, let's give them some more money, so maybe they'll come up with better ideas." I don't know, I don't understand why we're saying, "We got to add more money," when we already have money there that's not spent yet. And am I thinking incorrectly? Are they limited, where they are not allowed to spend this money that's in the balance?
Mayor, Councilmember Melner, so it's not a matter of them not being able to spend the money. So, the way that the arts fund works is, it's twofold. One, there's a portion of that that you'll see that are operating expenditures, so there's actually two members in our staff of arts and culture, and so they're paid out of there as well as operating. So, operating includes our grant program every year, there's a portion of money for that. For instance, if you guys have been to Ballet Under the Stars, that comes out of there. The art, a festival that happened in downtown, some of those things come out of operating. And then the other portion of that that you'll see up there is the CIP expenditures. Those CIP projects are initiated generally by departments. So, for instance, the Transportation Department, could we just, we're recently doing one with the Water Services Department in Councilmember Tomachoff's district. Or they can also be initiated, there was an ask, I know, from, from you, sir, for your district for an art project, right? And so, those are, those are various types of projects that, once they're initiated, we're able to utilize that money for as well. So, that's where that 1% comes from, a CIP project. Generally speaking, that money is put in there for a project to be initiated when a department includes that as, say, part of a larger CIP project, like the downtown campus, or there's a need, for instance, the well site that was up in Councilmember Tomachoff's district, to put art around a well site. So, there's different types of projects that come out of there. So, certainly, that fund balance will continue to be used. In fact, part of the master planning process is to help with that broader thinking of what does the community want to see from an art perspective? Same with our policies, our procedures for spending that money. And then the other piece to that is also, we're going to start changing how we operate with our departments and taking that five-year CIP plan and planning out projects ahead of time, so we're not in this process now of being reactive to the 1%, versus having a plan that goes directly with CIP.
Okay, you partially answered my question, if I may, Mayor. But I, I still see a fund balance that isn't spent, which means we have money to do arts projects in the city of $2 million. And I would like to see us do that. And I think you have plans to do some projects in the future, but it's not drawing down that fund balance. We need to spend more, apparently. If we, if we want to do, as Councilmember Turner suggests, we need to be, have a little bit more art in the city. We need to spend what we got first. I don't see any reason why we'd want to increase it until we spend what we're, we're getting. And, and that, that's, I think, the process that we should, we should follow. Regarding taking and putting fund money back in there from something that was swept, I get the sentiment and the concept of that, but it was swept because we were in a very bad situation. We had a very bad economy. This wasn't the only fund that was swept, I'm sure. And it was swept, it was money that was put in there by council, or by the percentages that we have allocated by council, and we decided, somebody, not us, but somebody before us, decided to sweep it, because there was a need, because there are sources that wouldn't be delivered if we didn't sweep some funds, and we did. Now, we're saying, "Well, because we did that, we need to put it all back." I disagree with that. We swept it for a reason, and if we have projects that total $4 million next year, and I agree with those projects, I will definitely vote to fund those projects. But I don't see any reason why we would want to just put money into a to just put money into an account to just sit there and not be utilized. Let's first utilize what is in the account, and then move forward. I thought the manager's explanation was perfectly clear. If we want to move $2 million into this account, just like I asked to have some money moved to increase the budget on some items, they just, they just happened, because we had a consensus of council to do so. I think it's a very simple process. We don't need a plan to go through and say, this is how we're going to use it, if we want to just move the money. I don't believe we have a plan to spend what we've got yet. So I don't see us having any reason why we would put more money in there until, and again, I'm not sure who puts that together. You said departments and council districts and other people can request arts. Well, here it is, folks. If your district needs some art, there's money there, start requesting it. I did, in my district, and got a small project going up at the former airbase that was in our, in our city. So, again, that's all I have to say. I just think, we just need to move on. If we want to move $2 million now, then let's vote on it, or have a consensus to do so, and if we don't, then let's spend at least the money we got there.
Are you finished? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with a great deal of what Councilmember Malnar said. Couple of things. I don't think there's anybody on this council who's more supportive of the arts than I am. I was a professional potter for 20 years and made a living, sort of selling my pottery and sculpture during those 20 years. So I do recognize the value of art and how important it is to community. I was also here when we swept a lot of money during the recession, and it wasn't just in arts, it was in the enterprise funds as well. At that time, council did direct a plan for replenishing the enterprise funds over time. I remember, and I don't remember the amounts, but there was a plan to put X amount back into the water fund over a period of time. There was no direction given at that time to replenish the art fund. So those people who believe that council gave direction to replenish the art fund when we swept those funds are incorrect. I think this whole topic has, has been blown out of proportion, to tell you the truth. I think that some on council have a greater agenda, and is using this item to further that agenda, and that is all that I will say about that. I concur with what Councilmember Malnar said. There's a $2 million fund balance. We're not exactly spending it like money is going out of sight. It's still there, it's parked there, it'll be there for a couple more years, it looks like. I would rather wait and see the results of an arts master plan. And at that time, if the public and council and staff come to consensus on some major projects, I would be more than happy to fund them and move the money there. But just to park the money there for sake of parking the money there, and having an additional $2 million sit idle, makes absolutely no sense. So if we are going to try to achieve consensus on this and ask for moving, which is, you're right, Councilmember Aldama, this is a legislative body, we don't need a plan. If we're so hell-bent on moving that money, four of us can direct that it be moved at any time. Okay? When I am asked today whether I think it's prudent to move that money, I am not going to give consensus, and I am not going to support the request. Thank you.
Senator Tomachov? Thank you, Mayor. My recollection is, is that the 25 million for two years in a row that was sent to the NHL to operate the hockey team, I don't remember, I don't remember the repayment plan until 2014. So, and I don't think any of that money was repaid under the previous regime. And I'm aware that that, because we had discussions when I first got here about starting to repay that money. So that money was not, there was no repayment plan, and I could go back and double-check the minutes, but I'm sure I'm correct about that. The idea, though, we just talked to the Assistant Director of our Economic Development, and she said, understanding the amount of money allocated to art resources would be part of being able to come up with a master plan. So I guess I want to understand, are you saying yes or no to the $2 million? Because understanding what you have to work with is an important piece of understanding whether you're going to have that additional resources available for art around the community or not. And they're just now starting the master plan, so if you're saying, do the master plan, and they don't really know that they may or may not have this other money available, I'm trying to understand the direction we're giving, we're going to be giving them to move forward with their master plan. I'm saying that I think they should know that that $2 million is available, and that the economy is, where the situation is good in Glendale right now, and this is the time to pay the money back, and not wait until, I mean, we could quite possibly be headed into a recession. If times get tough, there may be a need at some time in the future to sweep the art fund again. I'm not saying that that would never happen again, but when, you know, when you, you know, when you, when you have the money is when you take care of, I think, take care of your debts, and I think the timeliness of the fact that they're just starting the process of a master plan is important for them to know what resources are going to have to move forward. I'm sure that there were things that were not art, that wasn't put into the community because of the lack of funds for several years. So even in our arts collection, I'm sure we're still trying to catch up, because there were several years where there was almost no money spent on art. And we've got some really beautiful pieces around the city, but, I mean, I think if art is important to you, it's important, it's important to our, our community that we care about the cultural things that we offer for residents. And so I, I just want to understand, if you're saying no, then they're going to move forward with the master plan, if there's not a consensus for the $2 million, that they're moving forward with a master plan without having that $2 million available. So I'm just trying to understand.
What was your question, too?
Well, I guess I wanted to ask the people who are saying they're not, they're not, they're not in favor of it.
Would you like to address that?
Oh, yes. I can think of 100 different scenarios where you make a plan, and you have some money, and all of a sudden, it's going to cost more than what you planned for. Look at downtown campus. We started at $75 million, but as the plan firmed up, we recognized that we needed more than $75 million. I think it's perfectly fine to move forward with an arts master plan, and let's see what kind of costs are involved. We've got $2 million, we have the understanding that should more be needed, we can tap into another $2 million if necessary. It's, it's not a no-brainer. We can go ahead and do the arts master plan, and you don't have to know the exact dollar amount, because there probably won't be projects in there that are tapped at a certain dollar amount anyhow. It's just a plan, something to get started with, something to look at, something to plan for the future, so that we know what direction we're going in. It does not require knowing the exact penny in the arts fund to do a plan. Thank you.
Mr. Phillips?
Mayor, members of the council, so maybe, maybe add some additional information on the master plan. So the master plan won't be specific to projects, so it won't, it won't identify in the master plan that we want to spend, in this case, the $1.9 million in the following ways. What it's really doing is engaging with the community, because this, the notion of art is pretty broad. Art can be everything from something that augments an existing physical structure, it could be art maybe placed within a structure, it can be performing arts, it could be, you know, so there's live arts and performing arts that are eligible for this. So the master plan is designed to talk to the community and the Arts Commission, and prioritize where, where the funding should go. And so that's really the process. And then, once they have the framework for how, how they believe our community wants to see the investment realized, then it's just a matter of the budgeting process. They will budget art projects, whether it be live arts, physical art, whatever, within the amount that's appropriated within the budget. So it's not really, it's not project-driven on the, on the master plan, it's really more the framework that they, they want to update to make sure there's a healthy balance between expenditures towards live art and physical art, art collections, and other types of investments.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm not, I wasn't here when the arts fund was swept, but I can tell you, it wasn't just because the economy. There was mounds and mounds and mounds of debt from Camelback Ranch, from a hockey deal that didn't work out, it was just ludicrous. It was one-sided, and it wasn't sided for the citizens, and for the arena debt. So there was debt that was mounted, that was just proved to be too much for this city. So no, it wasn't just swept for because we were losing services. There was mounds of debt that we had to, that council at the time made some decisions that hurt the city, so just remember that. I feel like what we need to do today is start to incrementally return that fund, that 1.9, back to the fund balance. I'm not in favor of giving the 1.9 today, but I think four of us, or this entire council, could give consensus today to begin to incrementally replenish that fund. That's what this council should do today. That's what I'm asking, that we begin. That's just the right thing to do, and I'm asking the council to get consensus on incrementally what that dollar amount is. This legislative body can decide that. Thank you.
Mayor? Go ahead.
Thank you. I concur, and reckoning back to the discussion that we had many weeks ago on this, when I first raised it, it seemed clear to me that there was a consensus to do this, to replenish the fund, and the ask was for staff to come up with a plan that would be easy enough to manage in our budget. I think I recollect a council member agreeing that it should be done incrementally, and another one suggesting that it should be like maybe in three or four increments. And so therefore, I will propose that, that this council adopt today a policy that we will replenish the $2 million that was swept from the arts fund in four installments over the next four years of half a million dollars each. And what that can accomplish for us, too, is to give our community a signal that we value art, and that we're, we're good on our word, that we do intend to make whole the funds that were swept in the past, and also that it tells our community and the Arts Commission to, to think small necessarily when they're doing the master plan, but that they have a council that's supportive if they choose to think big, that, that we're going to consider big ideas if they bring big ideas forward, that they don't have a small-thinking council when it comes to the arts. So that's my, that's my proposal, Mayor, is that we do four installments of half a million dollars each over this year and the next three years.
Mr. Milner, and then Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor. I could perhaps go along with that, with the exception of this. I didn't quite understand the last time we had a consensus, and I believe I was on the consensus side of that, of the balance and how much is being currently spent. I just don't see the need to replenish or to increase a fund that has a balance that's not being used. Secondly, I want to see the master plan first. I want to know, what does the community want to see? If they want to see $10 million in, in projects over the next 10 years, then, then, then I need to consider all those and decide how much of that we should as a council fund. But I believe that we need to see a plan before we just start putting money in there. Let's see what the community wants to see, and if, if the commission and the community comes across saying, no, over the next two or three years, we can use up that fund balance, but then after that, we'll probably need some more. Then, in two or three years, we say, okay, we need to put more money than what is coming in from the 1% charge. Maybe we up that 1%. Maybe we simply move some money for more fund balance. Whatever we need to do, we do that, but not until we see a plan. I would like to know what the plan would be, not necessarily specific projects, because as was stated, we're not going to know that, but we'll at least have an idea, you know, where, what kind of art and is desired, and then year by year, we fund it as we need to. Why do we want to fund it all in advance, not necessarily all, but why put $2 million out there when they're not even spending yet the $2 million that's already there? It just doesn't make sense to me. Thank you.
Mr. Hugh?
Well, I think Councilmember Malnar took away all the points I wanted to hit on. I agree, we have almost $2 million sitting in there. I have to tell you, I love arts, I like the performing arts, but I don't have anybody call me on the phone as a council member complaining about art in Glendale, and want to know how come there's not more art. I think coming up with a plan to do it and let the council decide, that's worth funding, I think that's how it should be. And I think starting off with almost $2 million is a good start. I don't know what else I could say about it, but I don't know, we're spending a lot of time on something I'm saying the citizens aren't very aware of. Thank you, Mayor.
Senator Tomachov?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make the point, because I just verified that about a million dollars, at least a million dollars in arts is going to be included in the downtown campus project, because of 1%, it's going to be somewhere around 90 to 100 million dollars. So somewhere in that neighborhood of this money is going to go to art, and maybe, and maybe there'll be more art, but a half of this that's here is going to go towards the downtown campus for art projects around here. Thank you.
Are you done?
No, it won't, because as the city pays for the downtown campus project, it must pay that 1%, so that's an additional 1% that's going into the arts fund. So it's, it's not like you're telling people that there's $2 million there, and we're going to use a million. Yes, we may use a million for the remodeling of City Hall, but the law says that as the city spends money on city buildings, it must contribute 1%, which means it's going to be contributing another 1% put into the arts fund. So...
So it would be a wash?
Yes, exactly. Thank you.
Any other conversation? Okay, my turn. This reminds me of a couple families that I knew years ago. One of them would decide where they wanted to go on vacation, save their money, and then when they had the money, they'd go on vacation. The other folks literally would, would just go on vacation, put it on their credit card, and then figure out how to pay it afterwards. I don't think the second way is the way to do it. Our Arts Commission has the ability to discuss themselves, what they want to do, how much it's going to cost, and come to the council, make a recommendation, we'd like to do this project at this amount of money, and if it's higher than what they have available, ask for that money. I think there's enough people on that commission. I'm positive that the person that's over arts, I can't remember how to pronounce her name.
Mosch. Mosch.
Mosch. I know that she's aware that there's money that's owed by the city, but money owed by the city doesn't mean that they're not going to get their money, it just means that it hasn't been a priority for us to give them money that they're not spending. I, I'm not in favor of advancing that money today. It is their money, and I think all of us, the one thing I think all, everybody would agree, is it is their money. I don't think anybody disagrees that at all. But what if they, what if we give them $2 million, they have $2 million, they come to us, say, we need $6 million, does that mean the project doesn't happen? Or do we, as a council, review it and figure out, is that money that we want to go ahead and put in extra? I would think, if it was necessary, and we believed that was the right thing to do, that's what we would do. So, you know, I don't want to take a beating on one side, because we're these horrible people that aren't giving money back, and at the same time, understand that people can come to us and make your requests, and we, as a council, will make that decision at that time. So I'm going to ask, because it sounded like everybody's done talking, is there a consensus of what Mr. Turner proposed, about 500,000 a year, starting this year, and an additional three years?
Yes.
That was your question, was it not?
That is, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, we do not have a consensus for that. Okay, what's next?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Would there be a consensus from the council to reduce that amount to $250,000 and not to 500?
You've heard the proposal from Mr. Aldama, is there a consensus to move $250,000 a year for the next, I guess it would be seven years plus this year?
No.
Oh, yeah? No, there's not.
Okay, done deal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, additionally, we were asked during the last budget workshop, what memberships were being paid out of the non-departmental fund? That would be the League of Arizona Cities and Towns at $93,000, Maricopa Association of Governments at $48,000, the National League of Cities at $12,000, Alliance for Innovation at $10,000, and then we have programmed in the Westmark membership for $20,000, and we're assuming that in, that's not an additional amount. Additionally, these were council-requested additions to the operating budget that came up at the April 6 workshop. The first was ballistic equipment for sworn fire personnel. That cost us $428,000. Added two firefighters at a cost of $246,000. We added one code inspector at $143,000, and we added $5,000 for the feral cap program Additional changes based on staff recommendations were carryover adjustments for IT projects at $7.3 million, carryover adjustments for vehicles at $1.9 million, and to reclassify the intergovernmental program manager to director at $45,000. We also moved the Public Safety Health and Wellness Coordinator to the General Fund. That was originally split between the General Fund and the Workers' Comp Fund, but upon discussion with Workers' Comp, that's not an allowable use within Workman's Comp, and so we moved it to the General Fund, but there's no budget increase associated with that. Additionally, we did carryover adjustments for existing projects of $19.2 million. We added the Vi parking garage investment at $16 million, and there is a revenue offset equal to that $16 million. We moved the police evidence storage project from fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '24, $14.7 million. We updated the arena capital to reflect the new ground lease of $10 million, and there is also revenue offset related to that. We added fiscal year '24 DIF funding for the Heroes Park ballfields at $4 million. We added fiscal year funding for the system of care tenant improvements at $3 million. We added fiscal year funding for design of the Heroes Park Rec Center at $2 million, and we added fiscal year '24 funding for the design of Velma Teague Library at $660,000.
Not sure, there... Yeah, question. Can you tell me the difference between the design of Heroes Park Rec Center at $2 million and Velma Teague Library design at $660,000? Why such a difference in cost for design? Buildings are probably the same size. I don't know.
Mayor, members of the council, these are the estimates that we received from engineering for the Velma Teague Library. They tell me it's about, I want to say, 10% of what they anticipate the cost of those renovations to be. So that's why we, that's the number that we used. For the Heroes Park Rec Center, specifically Councilmember Clark, during a previous budget meeting on CIP, she had $1.7 million, or the council had $1.7 million dedicated for an expansion at Heroes Library, and she asked to change that to be for the recreation center and to add $3 million, I'm sorry, $300,000. And she received that consensus, the council agreed to that, so that's where that $2 million came from. It may be less to do that design, but that's where the $2 million came from.
Thank you for that explanation. That makes sense. What doesn't make sense to me, maybe I heard wrong, maybe I did hear correctly, maybe I'm just not putting two and two together here. So you said that the 660 is a percentage of what our engineering team feels the cost of the renovations are going to be. Do we already have, does our staff already know what we're doing? Because we haven't had that conversation, and I'm speaking to the city manager. Is there already a discussion of what renovations are going to happen? If you already know what the proposed costs are going to be? We don't even know what we're doing there, but it sounds like maybe you have, and I don't know why.
Mayor, members of the council, all we've done, because this is relatively recent in terms of the council direction, is we've looked at the cost per square foot typically of a library for either renovation or new construction. We've estimated the amount of square footage. We've come up with an estimated project cost, and then normally, your design fees are generally can be assumed to be a percentage, anywhere from 10% to 15% of those of your project costs. So it's still really high level, but as we get into it, we'll certainly start going through the process of how that's going to be programmed. You know, there could be factors that could either increase or decrease the cost of the library, once we understand what the vision is for the community and the council. But right now, it's just really using kind of performative ways of estimating a budget at this level.
Yeah, seems low to me, but maybe you and I can have a one-on-one conversation, but it sounds like you don't have a solid plan, but it sounds like there's some dollars already rolling, and I'm not sure I agree with them. But thank you for the explanation I asked for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I think my first question was just answered about confirming that the $2 million that was moved away from library extension will now go for the design of the Heroes Park Recreation and Aquatic Center. But I do have an additional inquiry, and that is, on the slide, it shows that we're adding $4 million in DIF funds, most of which were earned as a result of the Loop 303 We're moving $4 million in DIF funding to Heroes Park Ballfields, but we're still short. We're short in the amount of 5.8 million. So I wanted to ask staff, do we have the capacity anywhere to fully fund these sports fields? I mean, if we're going to do it, let's do it right and follow the total design plan. So is there money anywhere to fill that gap of 5.8 million?
Mayor, members of the council, based on what we see in one-time funding coming in this year and over the next few years in terms of one-time sales tax and those types of things, yes, I believe we can fund the additional 5.8 million. We would fund it out of general fund cash.
Okay.
Excuse me, can I just...
Yes.
Add one more thing? And that is over and above your reserve requirement. So that doesn't mean it wouldn't have to reduce. You'd still be able to keep your $50 million fund balance as council policy.
So this is reserve cash that the city has accumulated over the course of this fiscal, past fiscal year, correct?
Mayor, members of the council, that's correct.
Okay. Well, I'm going to ask, and we'll see if there's any consensus. I'm going to request consensus that we fully fund the Heroes Park sports fields. Thank you.
Okay, you had your hand up.
Thank you. So what is it, when do we run out of capacity for parks? Is it 2024, 2025?
Mayor, members of the council, I believe the question is, when do we run out of bonding capacity? And I believe that's 2025.
Okay. So that's my question about the Rec Center. Do we have, under the current, what we have available, the capacity to build the Heroes Park Rec Center? We'd have to have a bond election, wouldn't we?
Mayor, members of the council, I think, if I understand your question, you're asking, do we have sufficient bond capacity to build the recreation center? Not just to fund this $2 million, or are you asking...
No.
To build the whole thing?
Right.
Just making sure I understand your question.
To build it, yes.
The answer to that is no. We do not have sufficient bond capacity. However, we may have other funding sources.
But, I mean, generally speaking, we use, you know, for CIP, things like this, we would use bond capacity. I mean, especially when we're possibly heading into a recession, I hesitate to spend down all of our cash, you know, in the event we need it to, you know, provide services. So that's why, I mean, and I've been fully supportive of the Heroes Park, but I mean, you know, what is the priority? Is the priority the ball fields? Was the priority, was the lake? Now the lake's built. I'm just saying, I don't, my position is, I don't want to spend all of our cash finishing. We need to get the bonds passed to be able to finish Heroes Park and not spend down all of our cash to finish Heroes Park. So, I mean, if you're proposing taking almost $6 million in cash to finish the ballfields, and then there may be possibility to find the cash to build the Rec Center, I'm just wondering whether, I'm okay with this, because this was moved away from expanding the library, which I thought the money should go towards the Rec Center. But if we don't have, I mean, I know that the design takes time, but we, I wouldn't be supportive of using cash to build out the Rec Center. I would not be supportive of that. If that's what the plan is moving forward, I just want to be sure that I put that out there now, that I believe that we should not continue to spend down cash to build out these kinds of assets.
Mayor, members of the council, just for clarification purposes at the moment, we're talking about 5.8 million for the ballfields. The total sources of funding for the ballfields are $7.5 million in ARPA funds, $4 million in DIF, and then the balance of the $17.5 million or so is what was requested out of cash. So just, this is not impacting the design of the Rec Center.
I know. I understand they're two different things, but what I'm saying is, you said that we could come up with the $5.8 million in cash to finish the ballfields, which, that's fine. That's okay. But we, what I wanted, then I wanted to move down here to the Rec Center and understand, do we have, do we have the funds right now to move forward with the construction of the Rec Center? As the CIP stands right...
Mayor, members of the council, we do not have sufficient bond authority. We may have other sufficient funds. But if you're asking, do we have sufficient bond authority? No, we would need a bond election.
Okay, and that, the original plan was, this is in the CIP right now, the original plan was to bond for this.
Yes.
Wasn't it?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
Mayor, members of the council, it's been sitting in bond funds in the last, like, five to 10 years, or six years, six to 10, of the CIP, and continuously moved out because we haven't had the capacity for bond funding.
Right. I mean, and I honestly certainly don't want to punish Yucca residents or any residents for decisions that were made that created this situation. That's not what I'm, that's not what I'm getting at. But I'm just saying, how far out would this, if we do the design, how long, I mean, would this still be able to be used in two years, three years, whenever we are able to be able to fund the actual project? Does anybody know that?
Mayor, members of the council, I'm not sure that I'm equipped to answer that question, but the beginning of it, at least, would be a programming study to determine what kinds of amenities would be at this recreation center. And those certainly, yes, can be used going forward. It's almost like another master planning process where you're asking the community to tell you, what kinds of things do they want at the recreation center? And then, that information can continue to be used. Other plans and things like that, I'd have to ask engineering to, or it looks like maybe Mr. Phelps can answer that question.
Mayor, members of the council, again, I think what the council has some options, what you could do, and again, this is based on the priorities of the council, is you can, we could begin the work of the programming and preliminary design, which is what you really need to have, to have a cost estimate. Then, at the next year's budget cycle, if it's the desire of the council to move forward with that project, like any of your CIP, the question can be framed back to the city manager's office and Budget and Finance. What are the available ways we could fund that? And so then, we would come back at that point and say, here's, based on what we know today, here are possible funding solutions. Or we'd come back and would say, the only way we could fund this is by spending down your $50 million fund balance, or whatever. We would come back then with a plan. In your next year's budgeting process is when you would then decide whether or not to move funds and to make that a project in the coming year, keep it in the five-year, keep it in the six-to-10-year. But really, it does start with doing programming and preliminary design, so you can start getting an estimated cost budget. We know our last major facility like this was the, of course, the aquatic center in your district, and a lot's changed since then. And we don't know that the way that was programmed to meet the needs of the Choya District residents will necessarily be the same type of programming activities that may be in the Yucca District. I don't know. It could be identical, but it would seem logical that the first step would be to, you know, go through that exercise, work with the community, and then, I don't think that work would ever be wasted if you didn't have money in the immediate year. I think it's something you'd be able to build a foundation on and start working towards. So that would be, you know, just some initial thoughts.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Phelps. So, thank you, Mayor, because that was my, I mean, I just, so basically, we would be doing the first phase of the, of project design, which is basically analysis and figuring out, what does the community want? How do we, how do we provide that? I just, and I'm glad you said waste, because I just want to make sure we're not wasting some of this money, because we don't really have, we haven't identified how we're going to fund this yet. So that was what my concern is. So I'm okay with it, understanding that this is basically just, we're not going to drop $2 million next year. We're going to do the first phase of the analysis.
So, Mayor, members of the council, so let me add some context to that. What we would envision would be, there would be several phases to getting to a project. The first would start with a lower-cost element regarding the programming side of it, and then what, because the contract for design is a different contract, we could very easily bring that back in the next budget year, because we'll have an appropriation to do that. But it would be the council moving forward to each level. You could say, let's take it to 5% design. You could say, spend money to take it to 15% design. But we'll have the, if the council moves forward, we'd have the appropriation in the budget to do that. But each contract of that phasing would be something that would come back to the council at ratification.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We're a little off topic. I had asked for consensus to fully fund Heroes Park sports fields, and I don't think that has been answered. And I would also make this comment. The Heroes Park was put into the CIP in 1998. This year marks 25 years on a city promise to build a park that is still incomplete. This year alone, there will be over 8,000 new units, residential units, between single-family and multifamily. There will be between 15,000 and 16,000 new residents in the Yucca District alone by the end of this year. That's in addition to the 41,000 that every district has and does not include the residents that have come into Stonehaven and other multifamily units since we did the redistricting. So I think we're looking at a minimum of somewhere between, somewhere around 55,000 residents in West Glendale, whose recreational opportunities are very limited. Also gets back to meeting room opportunities are very limited. This is a promise the city made 25 years ago, and I'm embarrassed and ashamed that after 25 years, we still have not completed this park, and we can always find something better to put the money into than this park. So again, I ask that the mayor ask whether there is consensus to fully fund Heroes Park sports fields. Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask something?
Go ahead.
Are you proposing taking the money out of fund balance to do that?
Not out of the 50, not out of the 50 million, but out of fund, there are additional, there's additional funding above and beyond our fund balance, our reserve... there's additional funding above and beyond our fund balance, our reserve balance. And I'm asking to take the money out of that.
I just want to understand where the money's coming from. And I would like to point out that during the 25 years, there was more money spent in the Yucca District than in any other district in the city. It was allocated to resources that didn't necessarily benefit Glendale residents, but Glendale, the Yucca District was not ignored. And there's only one person sitting up here that had, that was serving during that time period. So, you know, we've done a lot, I think, as a council. The library was started before Councilmember Clark returned to the council. We are committed to the Yucca District and the citizens of the Yucca District, and we're trying to deliver this part to them. But I just want to point out that the district was not ignored for 25 years. There was a park built, a ballpark built, a lake built, a lot of things built out there that didn't serve the residents of Glendale. Thank you.
Mayor?
You can respond.
I, I do want to respond in one sense. Council was working on this before I came back on. You were considering a library vending machine.
No.
No, we were.
Oh, that was definitely on the table.
No, that was never.
It may have been rejected over time, but it was definitely a consideration, and staff did present a library vending machine for Heroes Park. You know, when it comes to Heroes Park, it's okay to do it on the cheap. I mean, it's, I've had to fight for every single thing. The library, it's only phase one. It's 7,500 square feet. It's smaller than Velmatig. It's half the size of Velmatig. It's a quarter of the size of Foothills. But I was willing to compromise on that to get a library structure at Heroes Park because there was a demand for it. It was needed. The same thing with these sports fields. In most other parts of the city, there are dedicated public sports fields. In my district and West Glendale, there are none. Yes, we have the youth sports fields over by the stadium, but you have to pay to use those, and those are used by leagues exclusively. I'm not asking for the moon. I'm asking for some equity. Not even equality, equity. So again, I ask this council to give consensus to fully fund the Heroes Park sports fields. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor? Go ahead.
I heard Councilmember Clark, Vice Mayor Clark, talk about the need, and certainly, I'm one that wants to help all of our districts, and I've had my share of community centers that need remodeling, and we've gone over many of them. None of them have been significant to the extent of what we're asking here today. However, I did several years ago commission a disparity study, and so I want to ask our staff, and maybe our Parks and Recreation Director can answer my question. In that disparity report, it demonstrated where we lacked, we being citizens, lacked services with regard to amenities in the Parks and Recreation Division, specifically to parks, community centers, and libraries, and whatever, and what have you. Did that disparity report demonstrate that there was a lack of services with regard to what Vice Mayor is asking for in that report? Did it demonstrate in that area there was amenities missing and lacking? I'd like to ask that question and get it answered.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Councilmember Al Dama, the answer to your question is yes, it did.
Okay.
It's a shortage in the southern and western part of the city.
Can you, thank you for that. Can you elaborate, and maybe, you don't have the document in front, but can you elaborate what specifically was lacking and why? And how does that relate to this project that Vice Mayor is asking for?
Again, I don't have it in front of me, I apologize, but I think it principally said our indoor recreation facilities were limited in those areas.
Thank you. Here's, here's what I'm asking, and I'll offer this to the Vice Mayor. I'd like for your staff, I'd like to the city manager to have you get that report where it specifically says that those amenities are lacking in the Yucca District, specific to this project, and I'll support it all day long. I do not want to deplete our fund balance. For the citizens who are watching, we have a policy that allows us to reach that if we want. We can spend it down. I'm not one that wants to spend it down. We've reached a goal of 50 million. We exceeded that goal. Doesn't mean we just keep grabbing at it. But if that disparity report, because that's what that was designed for, to determine where the need was, and if this project falls within that, I can be supportive of it. I would still want to know where we get funds from other than the fund balance. However, if that disparity report is leading this request, I commissioned that thing, I have to be supportive of it. I would ask that we table this request, if there's ample time, because I know we're in the budget process, for you to bring that back and demonstrate that Vice Mayor's request is supported. I don't think that's a lot to ask, and it's data that will support your request. And thank you, sir, for the information.
Mayor?
I, I would ask, would you be prepared at that time to fully fund the sports fields?
Vice Mayor, are you speaking to me?
Yes, I am.
I would like to see if that was in the disparity report. I could, I could support that, if that's what the disparity report says.
And I would make one other observation. As long as you're talking about the disparity report, which has nothing to do with the sports fields, where is 95% of all the programming in parks and recreation? Where does that occur? Foothills? Recreation and Aquatic Center? Not the rest of the city? Having, and this speaks to the idea of a Recreation and Aquatic Center down in South Glendale. Having a Recreation and Aquatic Center eventually, hopefully before I die, in the Yucca District, will open up a plethora of programming to people in your district, and Councilmember Yew's district, and my district, which have never had that opportunity before. So that's just an aside with regard to the Recreation and Aquatic Center, and why it's so important to us, not just me, but the residents of your district and Councilmember Yew's district as well. But right now, I am trying to get the sports fields fully funded. I am willing to wait, I don't know, the city manager.
Mayor, members of council, I think, can you explain our process? Because we're now getting backed up on a couple of process issues. I know, maybe, Vicki, you could.
Well, first of all, Mayor, members of the council, I just want to clarify again, as far as this request goes, this does not deplete our fund balance. You have a policy that says that you'll have 25% in reserve, and we are able to fund this 5.8 million out of basically savings from this year, where revenues are coming in higher, some expenditures will come in lower. And so we anticipate that by the end of the year, going into the following year, we would have enough savings to fund this request. Again, it doesn't deplete any fund balance. And that's at council's discretion, they can certainly do that. Regarding the process of tabling, the discussion, and that type of thing, for the purposes of the budget, we need to know whether we're going to move forward with this request. Because a tentative budget, which is scheduled for May the 9th, we have to, we have to have the largest number. From that point forward, we could reduce something, but we can never, in this budget process, we can't increase it. So, there are other decision points along the way, I would say, where contracts will come forward and things like that, that give council another opportunity to have more discussion about this particular item. But in order to set the budget, we would need to set it at the maximum amount at this time for next year. Mayor?
Mayor?
Okay, you want to?
Then I would ask again, hearing what budget constraints there are, I would again ask for consensus that we fully fund. If down the road, council wishes to pull back some of that funding, that's a discussion for another time. But I would ask that, that council give consensus to fully fund the sports fields. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to understand, you said, based on anticipated revenues, though, we would be able to fully fund it without going below the 25%, the 50? And I, honestly, I think 50 million is probably not the number anymore, because our operating revenues have gone up substantially. So what is that 25% number?
Mayor, members of the council, for the ease of, of understanding it, we keep, we call it 50 million, and we use that number. But yes, it has probably changed. Remember, it's only 25% of ongoing revenues, so sometimes when our, let me see, what was I trying to say? We have to back out these one-time revenues. So revenues are coming in higher, but a lot of them are things, and we've talked about this before, like construction contracting and things like that. This year, we'll have amusements that are particularly high. So these are one-time revenues that we back out of that before we calculate the 25%. I do not know the number off the top of my head, but it's still somewhere around $50 million.
Mayor, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I would want to know for sure before I would be willing to commit almost $6 million in cash. I mean, the economy is poised for a downturn right at this moment. So if I knew for sure, you know, what our reserves are supposed to be, what that 25% number is, and that this wouldn't affect it, and that we're going to have the revenue, so I don't know if you could put a placeholder in the budget? And then if the revenues come in short, or something happens, that it's not, but it's just a placeholder, I would be willing to do a placeholder, but not make a commitment to fully fund it, because there are some variables. I could, Mayor, I'd like to also say that there was never a consensus for a vending machine for books. There was a proposal, four of us were, you said that this council tried to put a vending machine at Heroes Park. That was never entertained by anybody on this council, other than the person who proposed it. And in fact, I remember hearing about blogs that were written about us, the city trying to put a trailer out there, because we only had a couple of million dollars to try to start a library. That's all we had. Now, the economy had improved, and everybody supported building the library, but at the time, the person who was representing the Yucca District wanted to put the vending machine, and the council said, no, let's put a library out there. And it wasn't a trailer, it was going to be a modular building, but it was started as to build a modular building out there, the vending machine, and it was, I think, over a million dollars, if I remember, for a vending machine. And there was never a consensus for the council to afford with a vending machine. Thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead. So, Councilmember Tomachov clarified a couple of my questions, but what you meant is that we're not going to, when I said deplete, I don't mean deplete as in vanish, okay? I just mean reduce is what I should use, so word smith there. What you said was that the 50 million won't reduce from 50 million because you've got revenues coming in, is what you're saying. We're going to replenish it because so much revenue is coming in. Just want, for those who are watching, we will be using cash from, from the fund balance, but because revenues are as such, we'll replenish it pretty quickly. I think that's what you're trying to say, in other words. The problem with the disparity report is that what we didn't do, and I'm pretty positive we did not do, is that it didn't outline where the lack of need is. It didn't prioritize those needs in our communities. It didn't say that ball fields are more important. And so that's what we need to work on next. Maybe an item of interest in mind, but we need to prioritize what those amenities are and which districts and what part of the city. However, I know we're running out of time, this won't take long, but what we're talking about, what the Vice Mayor is talking about, is the quality of life in that district by the project that she's asking for. I can support that, but I want to make sure that that's what that report says, because we are a data-driven organization, and we're just going to grab cash because a Vice Mayor wants it for a community who, I know many have probably asked for it. That's not how we do business. Is that the best place to put 5, 6 million dollars to increase the quality of life of citizens of Glendale? If that's the place and data shows it, let's do it today. We have a few days for your knowledgeable staff to pull back and say, yes, this, this is the data, and let's do it. I'm not going to just pull cash out, but we're being, I'm being forced today to support it right now. All I'm asking for is a few days. I know we don't have months. We have a few days to come back and provide the data and say, Vice Mayor is correct. I'll support it all day long. I commissioned that thing. This council, we've got the information back. If we have data that supports it, let's do it. But again, is that the best place to put those dollars to increase the quality of life for our citizens? I don't know where else. There may be many areas. My district itself has quality of life issues, so that's where I'm at with that. If we can pause to find that data, I'll support it all day long. I'm just a little concerned pulling cash out to, to do that. I don't think it's an outlandish request, I just think data needs to be supported here.
Okay, my turn. When we first started this meeting today, I'd made the comment that my daughter's birthday is today, she's 38. We bought our home in Yucca more than 25 years ago. At that time, my daughter was, if my math's correct, she was 12 or 13 years old. She now has a 10-year-old and an eight-year-old grandson. When we moved to that home, we were told by the realtor that there was a park being built, and it was going to have a library, it was going to have a swimming pool, it was all these wonderful things. My daughter's 38, doesn't live in Yucca District any longer, and so when I have the opportunity to get my grandsons, which is not real often, and I cherish those times when I get them, they still don't have the same thing. They have a library, they have a little bit more room, now they have a lake, which is awesome. At what point do we quit pushing things down the road? At what point do we actually do things that were promised? I was promised myself as a resident, not as the Mayor of Glendale, but as a resident buying at home, that that's what we were getting. It's more than 25 years ago, or about 25 years ago. So I, I think we've had plenty of discussion on this, the question's been asked two or three times. Is there support for Vice Mayor Clark's request? So I will ask, do we have consensus on her request?
Yeah.
I mean, I want the information on finances before I can, as a placeholder, yes, not as a commitment, no.
Okay. Without a commitment, the information that request, is it a no?
All right.
Yes?
Yes.
More information?
Okay. So we do have a consensus to move forward now. I still would like that information for everybody.
Absolutely.
Mayor, with that, I'll turn the remainder of the presentation over to Ms. Lindsay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. I'm going to walk the council through the remaining slides in the presentation, the first of which are the budget highlights. This is very similar to a slide that you saw at the beginning of the operating budget presentations. The fiscal year 2324 budget is a balanced budget. It does not increase any property taxes. There are increases in accordance with the current memorandums of understanding, or MOUs, for represented employees and public safety. There's a focus on employee retention. There is a 5% movement of all ranges, which is not a salary increase, it's just a movement of the salary ranges for city employees. And the salary recommendation is a 6.5% cost of living adjustment for non-MOU employees and up to 2.5% performance pay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Phelps, you and I had a discussion about the recommended increase, because the recommended increase, on the performance pay, top of the, top performance pay employee, the max they would be able to receive as an, as an adjustment is 9%. But the COLA is 8.7% this year, that's the actual COLA number, is 8.7. And we had a discussion about how the 5% movement in all ranges would kind of level that out. Could you just briefly, so that people understand that we've, that we've had that conversation? I just want to make sure employees understand, because they're feeling the pinch just as much as anybody. You know, at the pump, at the grocery store, we're all feeling it, and that the actual inflationary number is 8.7, and the highest performing employees are only going to be 3/10 of a percent above that. So could you go through that quickly, if you don't mind?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomachov, I'll certainly do my best. I've also got our HR Director, Jim Brown, here as well. So a couple of things to remember when we look at compensation. One, this council's committed to doing, having us do every other year, a comp and class study. So it's really important to understand is that what we do is, regardless of where inflation is at, we go out every 24 months and look at the is at, we go out every 24 months and look at the market for all of our positions at City Hall to make sure that we're competitive. And so we make that adjustments, which we did in the current budget year that we're in. So then, so that's important because whether you give a 9% COLA or a 10% COLA, a 12% COLA is less important depending on whether you start off competitive in your salary range versus being really far behind. So if you were, if you were 20% in the market, you give somebody a 10% COLA, they're still below the market. So we've tried to stay on top of the market by being committed to going through this every other year of doing a comp and class study. And, and so we, the 5% then is even a little bit more confusing because we have pay bands that the council establishes through policy. So let's take an example of a fictitious position in the city that is designed to be paid from $25 an hour to $35 an hour. What happens is if you're a longtime employee and you're at $29 an hour, or let's say $29.50, when you get a COLA, it would, it would, it would cap you out. So then you really wouldn't be able to even take advantage of the COLA increase. That sets us up then for losing really good senior staff members that have been with us for a long time. So we move the pay range up 5%. So that means nobody, so everybody will benefit from an increase. Now, what we do in this case, let's go back to that example where you get your COLA and you're now actually still capped out at your range. We pay a one-time differential to the employee in the way of a one-time payment to make sure they also still benefit from the full COLA increase. So we're, you know, we're, I think our team is doing a wonderful job of monitoring the market, looking where we're at within the marketplace. So the 5% is really designed to make sure we, that we keep competitive with our more senior employees. And then we feel that the 6.5 and the 2.5 mirror really the council's priorities because it was really from council direction that you wanted us to instill a performance-based, a performance-based pay system where we, we gave incentive to our employees to either meet expectations or to exceed them. And then just as a final closing, and then on top of that, we've expanded our, our bonus plan for our, for our success factors award. So not only are we doing, you know, for those for innovation and for outstanding customer service, but we broaden the categories that employees are eligible for a one-time payment as well. I hope that answers your question.
Mayor, it does. Thank you, Mr. Phelps. I just wanted to make sure employees were aware that we, you know, that we, that we value, as a council, we value them and want to make sure that they're, that we're competitive with our pay. So, and it, and it was confusing to me, that's why I had called him about it, to have him walk me through how this exactly was going to work. So thank you.
The next slide in the presentation is the fiscal year 2324 operating budget by fund. The general fund is 48% of the overall operating budget at $282.7 million, followed by the enterprise funds at $129.7 million or 22% of the budget. Internal service funds are $106.8 million or 18% of the budget. Special revenue funds are 11% of the budget or $67.8 million. And then the vehicle replacement fund is about $8.1 million or 1% of the total operating budget. The next slide is the fiscal year 2324 operating budget by function for the general fund. The total fiscal year 2324 general fund operating budget is $282.7 million. 41% of that is police services at $116.2 million, followed by fire services at 22% or $63.6 million. Parks and Recreation at $17.8 million or 6%. The Public Works Department's $15.9 million and 6%. Community Services, $10.1 million or 4% of the budget. And non-departmental at $9.3 million or 3% of the budget. The fiscal year 2324 capital improvement plan is currently $423.5 million. The majority of that is facility maintenance, which is $93.7 million, followed by streets at $78 million, parks at $54.8 million, public safety $50.5 million, water $46.1 million, wastewater $30.8 million, parking lots at $16.6 million, landfill $15.2 million, drainage $13.7 million, airport $9.9 million, transit $46, $4.6 million, library at $4.2, as well as solid waste is also $4.2 million, and the arts fund at $1.2 million. So that brings us to the final pie chart that council will see today. The total fiscal year 2324 total budget appropriation is $1.25 billion. Operating makes up $595.1 million or 47% of that, of that number. The capital improvement plan at $423.5 million at 34%. Debt at $97.6 million or 8%. And contingency at $137.8 million or 11% of the budget. This slide goes through the summary of the personnel changes that were...
You have a question? Would you, Councilmember Turner has a question?
Councilmember Turner has a question.
Of course.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So on 14, the total budget appropriation, or maybe it's in one of the other pie charts, what, what do we, under this scenario, predict that our reserve fund, not just our, not just our policy reserve, but all of our carryover, I guess, or whatever, I forget what term we use for it, fund balance carryover? What's the fund balance carryover in the general fund? I think that's the question I want to know.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Turner, members of the council, I have about two slides to go, and then I'm going to get to the general fund fund balance.
All right, I'll wait.
This next slide is the summary of the personnel changes that were presented to council as part of the all-day budget presentations. 46 positions are being added to the general fund, four positions to the enterprise funds, six positions to the internal service funds, and 11 and 1/2 positions to the special revenue funds for a total of 67.5 positions being added to the budget. And that brings me to the general fund five-year financial forecast slide that Councilmember Turner just asked about. So our beginning fund balance in fiscal year '24, again, is estimated based on what we are seeing in current year activity, is approximately $211.6 million. This slide is slightly different than you've seen it previously. We have broken out ongoing and one-time operating revenue and operating expenditures so that council can see those ongoing versus one-time revenues. For fiscal year '24, we're estimating, we're going to have about $310 million in ongoing operating revenue and about $51 million in one-time operating revenue. Operating expenditures at $194.6 million and one-time expenditures at about $88 million. The net transfers for fiscal year '24 are approximately $61 million. $5 million in contingency, which brings us to a total surplus or deficit of $12.3 million, meaning that we will exceed, revenue will exceed expenditures by about $12.3 million. Based on that information, we are estimating that the ending fund balance will be about $100, $224 million. We have $75.9 million in assigned fund balance for fiscal year '24. That includes the purchase of fire trucks, the general fund capital improvement plan, and the pension reserve policy. So we're estimating an ending unaside fund balance of $148 million. The next line that you'll see is the $50 million that we've been referring to as part of the presentation with regards to council's policy on the $50 million fund balance, which leaves us with an available general fund fund balance of approximately $98 million for fiscal year '24.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so what is the, the best practice for fund balance? It's 25% of ongoing operating revenue? Is that what it is?
Mayor, members of the council, best practice, I suppose depends on who you ask, but general, I'm sorry, Government Finance Officers Association recommends, I believe, 18% of ongoing revenue. But they then, again, state that it depends on jurisdiction. Our policy says 25% of ongoing revenue, and the logic behind having it be greater than what GFOA best practices is because of the dependence on sales tax revenue that we have, which is more volatile for some of the, if you look nationwide, a lot more communities are more dependent on property tax, which is not as volatile of a revenue source. Having said that, this is council's policy. So if you want to change your policy, you can, you know, change it to a different policy, but this has been the longstanding policy since Tom Channing and I arrived here several years ago, so.
I remember that. Mayor, if I could continue, so, and that's why I'm, I was asking how we arrived at that $50 million number was when 25% of our ongoing operating revenue equaled $50 million. But that's not the case anymore. It's a little over $77 million. So shouldn't that be what our fund balance that we're supposed to be carrying in fund balance is? I mean, I understand that we're, we've got the money, but should, should we change? I mean, if the, if our policy is 25%, that number's not 50 million anymore. So that's kind of what I was trying to get at.
Mayor, members of the council, we can certainly take a look at that. This was a pretty quick estimate of the ongoing revenue because we were asked by Councilmember Clark to look at ongoing revenue as it relates to one-time revenue. And basically, what we look at is, are we using one-time revenue for one-time expenses? And that's kind of what we put this together to demonstrate that our one-time revenue isn't being used to cover ongoing expenses. But if you want us to take a closer look, and we probably, actually, we cannot do that mid-year. We have to wait and kind of do that at the end of a fiscal year because you're calculating on a moving target. But we can go back and look at what it was at the end of last fiscal year, and we can look at it again at the end of this fiscal year. This is only an estimate of where we think we'll be by the end of this year and where we think we'll be by the end of the five years.
Mayor, if I could, I think that's an important conversation to have because I know we've been kind of tied to that 50 million number, although, I mean, obviously, I mean, I've been here eight years, and I think that was when, you know, it might have been 2014, 15, I don't remember, somewhere in there when we, when we actually hit the fund balance, maybe somewhere around in there. But I mean, the idea is that in the event of a downturn, you have a resource, it costs a lot more to operate the city than it did when we, when we, when we set that number at 50 million. It really is 25%, not $50 million. So I, I think that it's a worthwhile conversation to be having, especially before we start spending down the fund balance, that we decide that our, our fund balance, our policy is 25%. It's not a dollar amount. That's what our policy is. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, one, I think what we probably would suggest to do is we can take a look at best practices and maybe do it as part of a workshop outside of the normal budget process. But I want to make sure that the information here, there's a couple of things I want to point out. So when you see the number of 98 million projected in our FY '24 at the bottom, that's in addition to the $50 million of fund balance by policy. So what you're looking at is if you add those two together, we're projecting to finish the next year's budget year with a surplus of almost $150 million, which is three times the council policy. So tonight, today, when you, when the council gave consensus to fund the ball fields, for example, that, that number will reduce down a little bit now by about that $6 million because now we'll assign that as a placeholder within the budget. The other thing I, I think it's important to look at is kind of, and I was glad the staff projected this out for the five years, a couple of things to note. If you'd look at one-time operating revenue and go to years FY '26, '27, and '28, what, what this forecast does is it reflects a very conservative estimation. And what we're assuming is that essentially, construction sales tax comes almost to a halt within the city and that there are no new transactions, sale of any kind of assets or anything that would be considered a one-time. So it's a very conservative look because what we've done is we've said, all right, we're going to go normal growth on our ongoing revenues based on good history with both state income, shared tax, property tax fees, et cetera. But we're going to really ramp down the one-time. So then if you look at there, then if you look, there's some assigned expenditures that are related, for example, to the DCRP, to our downtown projects. So again, those are factored in here as well so that what you really, if you really kind of go out your five years with all the projects we have going on, all the things that you have set up within your, within your CIP, and there's quite a few, ask me, where the right-of-way program, the streets program, all those constraints on the budget, based on a very conservative, almost no forecast for new one-time revenue, or one-time revenues, you're still looking at fund balance in FY '28 of just under $100 million. So I think that, I think what the, the picture here would be to say is the city is in, in very good position to continue to fund kind of the priorities of the council. It has been, you've said from day one, you want to put more money back into our roads, our right-of-way, our parks, and all this is really showing you that we can continue to engage in those discussions as part of the capital plan. You can still maintain your conservative fiscal policies of being conservative, but I think it's, it's easily to say that there is still the ability to fund council priorities going forward.
Mayor, I'd like to continue. I guess my, my point was missed was that we're showing a general fund balance policy of $50 million, and that's not our policy. Our policy is 25%. So that number this year, basically, you're saying the available, available, actual available fund balance would be triple, but it really would only be double because that number, based on, and I know it's an estimate, but what I'm saying is I think we should have the conversation, based on what you have here on this slide, that number should be $77,560,000, not $50,000. So my point is, and I agree that, you know, we're, we're funding our priorities, but this is the savings account for the city and in an economic downturn, so we don't have to sweep the arts fund, and we don't have to raid the enterprise funds, we don't have to do things like that to, to continue to provide services and continue to, the payment management program and all of that stuff, you know, I mean, when you, when, that it's a percentage. And just like if you're saying, I'm going to save 25% of whatever I make in my savings account, you don't pick a number, and then when you get a raise, you just stick with that number. Your number's 25%. If council consensus to change that policy to $50 million, then we should have that discussion. This shows $50 million as our fund balance, no matter what our revenues are. So I'm saying we need to workshop this and decide what this council believes we should be assigning for basically an untouchable fund balance except in the event of an emergency. And at least the policy that, as it exists right now, is not $50 million, it's 25%. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I pretty much have that same question. I was hearing two different representations of our, our fund balance policy. And I do believe we have perhaps a written council-adopted fund balance policy. And so my question is, what does it say? Does it say 25% or does it say $50 million?
Mayor, members of the council, again, it says 25%. We've been using the $50 million for convenience. We can certainly update that number for you. We will calculate, we calculate it at the end of each fiscal year when the year is over, but we can estimate what it is, we can calculate it for you. We just have been using that for convenience.
If I can continue, Mayor, it, well, it's, it's convenient, but it's not accurate. And I would rather have accuracy than convenience. All of these other numbers in this slide 16 are estimates based on your best guesses, and I think that that number ought to reflect the same. So it should actually reflect the $77.5 million plus or minus that 25% of our ongoing revenues is. Thank you.
Mr. Phelps?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, so I looked at GASB '54, which is the GFOA standard on, on best practices for, for fund balance. What they recommend is two months, so roughly, that's 1/6 of your, so two months of, you just would divide out your, your annual revenues, divide, or expenditures divided by, by 12, and then multiply by two, and that would be the fund balance. So it's not quite, it's lower than 25%, but we can certainly, again, it's just a, really, it's something, it's just how we reflect it. It doesn't change the numbers that are here, but we can certainly come back and maybe propose at a workshop some potential policies that the council could adopt to put in to there. And then from then, point forward, we would just reflect the general fund reserve policy to be consistent with that policy.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
My point was that there is a policy, and it's 25%. If the council wants to entertain a discussion of changing what our policy is, then let's have that discussion. But at, right now, we, I know I sat on this council, and we adopted that policy of 25%. Most of us were here when we did that. And if there's, if there's going to be a change in policy, then we need to have that discussion publicly that we're willing to lower that amount of, of... then we need to have that discussion publicly that we're willing to lower that amount of fund balance down. But it's not a dollar amount, that's my point. It's 25%. So reflecting $50 million into eternity as our fund balance number, at least as the policy exists right now, is not accurate and not reflective of the policy that is in place right now. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is worthy of further discussion at a future date. I am not prepared to make any kind of decision on the issue right now, and I would certainly like further information and recommendation from staff. So as laudable as it is, I think this is a topic for future discussion.
So Mayor, can I just ask a question? Would this need to be an item of special interest, or will this just come back in a workshop?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll do that, and we'll pull out some best policy, provide you material, and then, again, we'll just take direction from the council.
Okay, so we won't need this to be a council item of special interest? No?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on.
The next slide is the fiscal year '23-'24 general fund transfers. The total transfers into the general fund are about $47.2 million. Both of those transfers in come from public safety, sales tax, police, and fire. And then the transfers out of the general fund are about $108.3 million. That includes the vehicle replacement fund transfer, transfer into airport special revenue, transfers for grants, the transfer to the gripstick fund, the maintenance of effort transfers, transfers pertaining to general fund capital projects, and then the debt service transfers.
Mayor, just quickly, I have a question. The maintenance of effort, is the money being transferred back into the various enterprise funds?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomachov, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Ms. Bauer, item number two.
Council item of special interest, presumptive cancer legislation.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report is our HR Director, Mr. James Brown.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you, City Manager. I'm here this afternoon to discuss a council item of special interest related to presumptive cancer legislation and to get directions to whether staff should bring this item forward for further review in a future workshop. As far as background is concerned, this is an item that Councilmember Tomachov has brought forward and essentially has two components to it. The first is to discuss a potential policy, council policy, to address presumptive cancer claims that fall under the pre-2021 presumptive cancer legislation and have gone through an appeal process that has resulted in a denied claim. The second component to this is to provide the council a presentation that addresses a couple of different items, and the first would be a brief overview of the existing presumptive cancer legislation and highlight the differences between the pre and the post September 2021 presumptive cancer legislation, what it is today versus what it was prior to the 2021 change. And then, second, to provide a high-level summary of how eligible public safety cancer claims are processed under the current presumptive cancer legislation. And then finally, to provide a summary of how the city receives reimbursement from the state for presumptive cancer claims. So again, two components to this, and certainly staff time for the first component of it. We estimate just a few weeks to put that together and to come up with council policy options to discuss with you. And then the second component of that would just take a few hours for us to put together a PowerPoint and bring that forward to a workshop. So any questions that the council has, certainly I'm glad to answer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Brown. I mean, I think everybody knows why this was brought forward, and I, as the, we had a firefighter that we lost in December, right before Christmas, that had his claims denied and was in the process, I believe, of appealing the claims when he lost his battle with cancer. And it's heartbreaking for me to think that that man had to leave this earth without knowing that his family was going to be taken care of. And as I was making phone calls and trying to understand, how does the legislation work? How does the state funding work? What does this actually policy look like, and how do we apply it to our firefighters? I realized that there was a lot of confusion about the state funds, how much money is available, that basically, it's a workman's comp claim, and that dollar amount is set per year, it's per family, all of that. I think it's important for us to understand as a policy, I mean, I'm not an expert on it, but I think there was a lot of confusion on what a claim and what the funding looks like. And I also believe that, I mean, and I know, you and I had this discussion with risk management, that hopefully, this doesn't happen to us again, but there could be somebody who has a recurrence of a cancer, or there, to think that there's never going to be another denial, or somebody's going to say that the cancer existed before this legislation was passed, I think is a little bit short-sighted of us, that what are we going to do if this happens again? And I believe that it should be a policy, and it should be, we should be responsible for the policy on how we handle that if it does happen again. I mean, and when I did ask the, is it Diane from Risk Management?
That's correct.
I did say, well, what if somebody has had cancer, they've been in remission for 10 years, however long in remission, and they have a recurrence? Is that claim now going to be denied? We don't know the answer to that. So I feel like it's important that we move forward and we learn about the policy, understand the legislation, what the state fund looks like, how it, I mean, I didn't realize that it was replenished every year, there's a new $15 million added to it every year. So if there's any money left over from one year, it rolls over to the next. So, you know, there should be money available to take care of these families should something happen to one of our firefighters. So, and our employees have to know that we have their back. That's how I feel. They have to know that whatever happens to them, we're going to have their back. And I don't want this to happen to another family. I really don't. So I hope that there's a consensus to have this workshop, at least educate ourselves, and then decide what we want to do. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, I guess this is my day to be a contrarian on everything. I believe that basically, we, the city has a policy, and that's to consider each case on a case-by-case basis. Is that what we do currently, Mr. Brown?
Mayor and Vice Mayor, when a claim comes forward, it's assessed through our third-party administrator, and if it meets the criteria in the legislation in a particular cancer case, then it's approved and moved forward. If it doesn't, if it's denied, then there's an appeal process that it can go through, and it can even go to a panel of doctors to be reviewed, and at that point, determine whether or not it's approved or not approved.
So basically, we do handle it on a case-by-case basis?
Each claim that comes in.
Yes, and I think that's appropriate because it's got a lot of safeguards as we consider the claim, and if for any reason the city denies it, there are other experts who can weigh in and say to the city, no, you were wrong, or yes, we concur with your opinion. I just don't believe in creating a blanket policy that says, well, you say you have cancer, okay, we'll pay. I believe there needs to be thorough review on a case-by-case basis. So I'm not, at this point, interested in moving forward on this council item of special interest. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Seeing as such that our third-party administrators batting 300, that they deny almost every single claim that comes into them from the state for firefighters, I would say that this is absolutely important that we study this further and we learn more about it. I think it's a good thing, and I give my consensus whenever it comes forward.
Mayor, I'd like to respond to Councilmember Clark. I'm not asking for an approval of a policy. I'm asking to, without being educated on exactly what the legislation says, what the state fund legislation says and how it works, and then decide whether you want to adopt a policy or not. I think it's a little short-sighted to decide no without even having all the information. Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I would have to agree to some extent with Councilmember Clark. I believe, I mean, I've read the laws that were established, and we had the first law that didn't cover all cancers, and then the second law that now covers all, pretty much all cancers. Perhaps there are still some there that would still be appealed, but I think the law is pretty clear, and the process is there. We have staff that takes care of it. I don't know that we need a separate policy. The law is the law. I don't know why we would need a policy on top of what the state law already says. The state law says to do it this way. Now, I get that the prior law didn't cover all cancers, but I see a very slim chance that there would ever be new cases come forward that could possibly be under the old law. There is a recurrence possibility, but I would think that would be considered as a new case since it's, again, it's in essence, a new cancer. So I believe that we're covered already. I think we follow the current law. We accept the claims as per the law. The state law is very clear that we do accept these claims. The reimbursement is real simple. The reimbursement simply states that the state will reimburse to the city the amounts of money that we have spent for these cancer claims for public safety. And that is only contingent upon the state having within their reserve fund, which they fund every year a certain amount, and they pay that. So I don't know that, I need to understand that any better. It's pretty straightforward. That's how it's done. The state fund this year, from what I understand, didn't use all of its funds, and so those roll over to next year, and then the state puts additional monies into that fund for the next year. Now, down the road, we may be held more accountable or more liable for some of those cancer claims if indeed the state doesn't have enough money to pay for that. And we would take account, take that into account as we do our budget every year. We may have to increase our risk management, but I don't see the need to, again, for me personally, I don't see the need to discuss it any further. It's pretty straightforward. The cancer claim law is the law. It's the way it's done, and I think we just follow the way that the law was set up.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, anybody that, the word recurrence means recurrence, not a new cancer. It's a recurrence of a cancer, not a new cancer. And so what I'm, we don't have a policy. What you're, I guess what I want to understand, Councilmember Melnar is saying, is if the claim is denied, the law, then it's denied. The way it's been working is that the claim's denied, and then it's administratively, after, you know, causing more drama and trauma and stress on a family that's dealing with somebody that has cancer because they served the citizens of Glendale, that it's done, the override occurs administratively. What I'm asking is to have a discussion about whether the city wants to have a policy on how we're going to handle these. So we establish a policy that in the event that it's denied, because the law is the law, and it says the list of cancers that we're responsible for taking care of people, if they come up with any of the cancers on the list, and they served as a Glendale firefighter, and the diagnosis dates and all of that. And all I'm asking today is to please educate yourselves on how this works, and, I mean, I guess I'm getting the idea that there's people who don't want to understand this better, that cancer never goes away anyway. You go into remission. It doesn't leave forever, and lots of people have cancer recurrences. I know plenty of them myself, that it comes back. And all I'm asking for is to bring this forward in a workshop, walk through how the law works, walk through where the money comes from, what the liabilities are for the city, also to understand what our liability is, and to have a frank discussion about it. And then if you still don't believe that it's the right thing to do, then that's okay. But I'm asking to have the discussion. Thank you.
Yes. Either one of you? Go ahead. Sorry.
As I understand it from the, what was provided to us, the background material, the council item of special interest is, has two asks. One is develop a clear understanding of presumptive cancer legislation, or two goals, to provide a clear understanding of the legislation, how the cancer claims process works, and how the city has reimbursed eligible claims. I think we could all benefit from that information. I also think that our residents and our firefighters could benefit as well. It would be nice to have that information on record in a way that it could be returned to later and reviewed. I think there's great value in that, and I will also say that I think that it was clear from the unfortunate experience of the last firefighter we lost, that staff and management didn't understand how the process worked. So I think we all need to get on the same page. And the other ask then would be, if the council so desires, would be to develop a policy based on that common knowledge of accurate information, and that's a bridge that we cross later. So I think it's, you know, if the council wants to develop a policy, they will do it. I would like to see them do it based on full and accurate information, and if they don't want to, I'd like to see them do it based on full and accurate information. But first, we need the full accurate information, and therefore, I support moving forward with this item of special interest. It is a small investment of time and talent that can provide a huge benefit and reward to our community and to our firefighters and to this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Jim, I kind of listened to your policy. Are there, are employees haven't been taken care of, or how does that all work out, all the different cases that has come before you?
Mayor and Councilmember Hugh, are you being specific to cancer cases or just all cases in general?
Yes, what we're talking about today.
The cancer cases. So when, there have been cases that have been denied, as the council has indicated, gone through the denial, or gone through the process, they've been denied, and subsequently, administratively, those have been overturned and approved. But they have had to go through the process. The difference between the pre-2021 legislation and what the legislation is today is there's a higher burden of proof on those cancer claims in terms of exposures and that type of thing. The new legislation eases that burden. So as far as those cancer claims are concerned, we would expect to see the majority of those come through as approved. They would still need to be reviewed in light of the legislation, and then at that point, they would move forward.
But if the follow-up, when we've been denied, the city stepped forward and then reversed it, haven't we? That's how we've been doing it?
Mayor, Councilmember Hugh, that is correct. That was an administrative decision? Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just one question. You mentioned that the law changed. Have there been any denials under the new law?
Mayor and Councilmember Melnar, I'm not aware of claims that we've had under the new law at this point, but I'm not aware, I'm not aware of any. I'll say that.
Okay, because I understand from the new law that it's very, it would be very difficult for denials under the burden of proof that the law was adjusted so that the insurance companies are almost required to cover the cancer claims. Is that, is that correct?
That would be accurate, yes.
Okay. Again, I guess that's the point that I was trying to make earlier. Yeah, there may be something that does fall under the old law, that I think we take care of those on a case-by-case basis, but under the new law, and I'm very much in support of that, that the, that the claims are going to be taken care of, that there's not going to be this history, and I don't see the need to go back through our history and go over all this again. Under the new law, the claims are going to be paid, they're not going to be denied. The burden of proof is almost impossible to deny under the new law, and it was written that way, and so I don't see any need to go further into this issue. I think we've basically covered it. It's taken care of. Our public safety employees are going to be taken care of. If they get cancer, they're going to be taken care of. And if they happen to be one that, as was stated, that perhaps is a recurrence, there is a process still that they can go through, and I'm sure as a city, we'll do the right thing each time that, if that ever were to happen again. And I think we just follow the law as it is and keep moving forward, and if we need to administratively approve a case, that we should move forward, and management has done that. Hasn't been a council item, it's been, management has basically said, we're going to administratively take care of this. I think that is a process that we should continue to move forward with. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, thank you. So the most recent case that we had- So the most recent case that we had, happened under the new law but was denied because it was said that the cancer occurred under, because the person had an episode under the old law. And so that's why. But my point is, we don't have a policy. So I guess what you're saying is, you don't want to have a policy. We don't have a policy on what to do under these circumstances. So I'd like to know, I believe there's three of us that are in favor of having this policy, or having this workshop even, to move forward and at least educate ourselves on how this process works, what the law says, and then decide if we want to move forward as a council with the policy. That would be the next step after the workshop. So, I mean, I don't want to, you know, opine this to death. I just, I believe, I'm supportive of it. It's my council item of special interest. I believe Councilmember Odoma and Councilmember Turner have spoken in support. If there's, if there's nobody else in support of this, then I guess we can just move on. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor. Earlier, the question was asked, have we denied anybody? And the answer was, no, we didn't. We covered them. I'm not sure we were going to cover them. If we didn't have the media coverage, if we didn't have the pressure from the family, if we didn't have pressure from firefighters within the city, outside of the city, statewide, I'm not sure that our administrative team would have. I made calls to the city manager, and I was told just have to wait. We can't wait. The last case we had, the firefighter passed away not knowing that his family was going to be covered. I think it was over four days. We weren't going to cover it. The city wasn't going to cover it. Why did it take so long? If we have a policy in place, a philosophy in place that states, this is what we're going to do if this happens again, we don't, we're absent of a policy. We know what the law is. But Glendale can create a policy based on the philosophy of this council and how we value our firefighters. That's what our firefighters need to know from us. You put your life on the line, we have your back. All we're asking is for it to come back. I believe it's five, five hours, and in four weeks, you can come back. Very simple request, not a lot to request. So I would support it.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and I feel sorry for anybody that has cancer in any form. But I'm just, for myself, checking again, but we have taken care of, if they've been denied, we step forward and take care of it, it's the city.
That guarantees that.
Mayor, that's what this council would want to happen. So do we have that assurance, that's what will happen?
Without a policy?
Is, I guess for you or the manager, we've stepped in. I don't know how many times this has occurred, but I know if it's been denied, we take care of it.
Mayor, members of the council, so I think I've administratively overruled two, correct, Jim?
That is correct.
The first one was prior to the new legislation, and it was the first case that we ran through. And remember that this council funds through its risk management, a insurance program that forces a carrier to pay excess amounts. Contractually, they have that obligation. So we had an obligation, however, to go through the process. And that's maybe the frustrating part for some, is that what we're hoping for is, in the beginning, was the claim would just be accepted so that our insurance carrier could step in. If we say automatically that every case is approved, they no longer insure us, and we would no longer have access to excess liability. Now, let's take the most recent case that was there. Again, they fell in between because the original diagnosis was in between the two pieces of legislation. When our legislature put the new presumptive cancer policies in place, unfortunately, while they addressed a funding mechanism, they did not make it retroactive. So there's about an 18-month window where people are somewhat in limbo, because the requirement is that you have to disclose and make your claim within one year of diagnosis. So essentially, every day between now and September, the window closes down as to whether or not, to this ambiguity within the policies that are there. Once we get beyond this window, the one-year notification, it's really simple, the state has, has taken the presumptive nature of the claim out, and they said, if it's one of these types of cancers, it is an automatic approval. And then they provided the city as an opportunity to fund that liability through the state program. So what will happen is between now and September, roughly, is every day that goes by that we don't have a claim, it starts kind of evaporating. By the time we hit September, we won't have any cases that will be eligible, from what we, our understanding of the law is, that would be under the old policy, everything will come into the new policy. So, you know, at the end of the day, what, I take, we don't go into a lot of personnel files on people who are going through serious medical. That's a HIPAA requirement. So I'm not able to share a lot of stuff in public. But what I can say is, I know, and our staff knows, this council is very passionate about protecting our firefighters and treating our employees as good as possible. That has not changed, and it's why I administratively overruled the, both of the cases. But I did come to the council because there was a liability to the city, now that we've kicked the insurance out of the, coming into play. We did come back to the council and let you know what, you know, what the plan was. And so again, I think this becomes a little bit of a non-issue once we reach September 1st, because I don't believe there'll be any cases that will now have fallen in between the two pieces of legislation.
Mayor, I disagree with that, Mayor. And I actually have done some research and talked to some people about this, and the fact that if somebody has a recurrence, there's, there could potentially be a problem in a denial, because the diagnosis, original diagnosis occurred prior to the new legislation. So there is a potential issue even after September, because cancer could recur when there was literally no legislation. I mean, and that's, that's just an actual fact. So, I mean, and I don't want to, like I said, I mean, we've spent a lot of time on this. I think there's three people who say, let's have the workshop, let's educate ourselves. And if there's nobody else, if there's no consensus for anybody to move this forward, then just, let's, let's move on.
Okay, so I've got a couple of questions. Mr. Brown or Mr. Phelps, either one, have either one of you been approached by any of the council as far as this particular issue, asking questions?
Mayor and councilmembers, I've just conversed with Councilmember Tomachoff in terms of putting this item together, and that's, that's the only.
Well, and the reason I'm asking the question is, the statement was made is that we don't know. And yet, every question I've ever had, both of you have always answered my questions. So I'm just curious, does the council not understand that they have the ability to go to either one of you to ask those questions? Because it seemed like they have questions for everything else. So I find that hard to believe, that you're not, you don't make yourself available. I'm going to speak as a cancer survivor. I'll go back to my daughter again. My daughter turned 38 today. When I was in the hospital receiving chemotherapy, MD Anderson Hospital in Houston, for seven months, my wife was at home pregnant, and I didn't know if I was going to make my wife a widow or not. I had no idea. I got out of the hospital after seven months, baby was born with more hair than I had. I was, why does this be, not a hair on my body? Believe me, I understand cancer as well as anybody, and I understand how traumatic it is. I had conversations with the firefighter when this first started. Him and I both talked about that. I told him where we were at, but also told him that there's procedures and policies that the city has that we have to abide by. Legally, we have to. I couldn't tell him what the outcome was going to be. I just told him that there's certain things that we have to do in a certain way, and I would hope that he understood that. At the time, I felt that he got it in my heart. Do I think we did the right thing? I think we did the right thing. I think it was difficult for all of us, because nobody wants to see the people who have cancer or the families have to put up. And everything you can do to eliminate those concerns and worries makes them a lot better, and it also makes us feel better. You know, God, I wish we could make this cancer thing go away. And I'm telling you that as a cancer survivor myself. But I do believe that both of you have answered all of my questions. I know that ARS, Arizona Revised Statutes, the law is there. If anybody wants to go on a computer and look it up, it's there, it explains it. We have a gentleman who wrote the law that's been in contact with many people. He's there to answer those questions if they, if they want to ask those questions. I don't know if having the same discussion all over again about policy makes any sense. To me, it seemed like a waste of time. My concern that maybe we should be thinking seriously about is finding out, and I would like staff to actually research, is finding out the concern that Councilmember Tomachoff has on recurrence. If that was to happen, then what? I think that's important, because I think that's the one thing that she brought up that really hasn't got addressed as well. But if that's the biggest concern that she has, it certainly sounds like a concern to me. As far as just knowing the law, I think we all understand it fairly well. A policy, I think we have a policy.
We, no, we don't.
That's my personal opinion. I believe we have a policy. So with that said, obviously, you'd like to speak.
I would.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Can somebody show me the policy? If we have a policy? Policies aren't just a thought, they actually are something that exists. And that is not my item of interest about recurring cancer, Mayor, and I'm not going to issue another council item of special interest. If this is a no, then this is a no. My item of interest is clearly stated in the staff report. It's a yes or no. It's simple. Apparently, that's a no.
Okay, well, I'll ask for consensus, beans that you already did it. Is there any other conversation? Okay, is there a consensus with Councilmember Tomachoff's concerns?
Yes.
Yes.
Apparently, there's not.
Thank you.
Ms. Barr?
Council item of special interest, source of income discrimination ordinance.
Mayor, members of the council, here to make staff presentation is Jean Moreno, our Director of Community Services.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is a council item of special interest that was raised by Councilmember Turner to explore feasibility of the City of Glendale adopting a source of income discrimination ordinance, similar to ordinances that have been recently adopted by the cities of Phoenix and Tucson. Pardon me. In those communities, they've basically adopted ordinances that would prohibit a landlord from denying someone the ability to rent a unit based on how they intend to pay, as long as it was a legal source of income. So as an example, housing vouchers, child support, alimony, those types of sources of income that don't come from wages. There are multiple federal and state laws that address fair housing. In those, in both of those communities, based on some preliminary research, they both have very robust ordinances related to fair housing practices, so they're part of a larger code of ordinances. If there's consensus to move forward, I would collaborate with the city attorney's office to evaluate model ordinances, assess the status of the Arizona Attorney General's position on those ordinances, because as you know, there have been some filings around those ordinances. And then also interviewing counterparts within those communities to determine how they, how they provide services, how they address complaints, and how they address enforcement. Because with any ordinance, an ordinance is only going to be as good as your ability to enforce it. If there is consensus to move forward, the estimated time spent for this project would take about 30 hours, and it would probably take eight to 12 weeks. And so with that, I would be happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Said I was going to be a contrarian today, and I am. I don't support this. I don't believe that we should be telling landlords or mandating to landlords. I thought this was still a free country. And so I will not support mandating landlords and how they rent their properties. Plus, I think it's going to be very hard to prove that a rental was denied because somehow or another, the landlord considered the source of income is not being adequate. People are denied rental all the time for various reasons, and that's the landlord's right. So I will not support this. Thank you, Mayor.
Questions? Somebody?
I got questions.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, you mentioned, I thought you said, that other laws and ordinances outside of what we would do here already include those kinds of things? Is that Fair Housing Act you mentioned, or, you know, can you explain that a little bit more?
Mayor and Councilmember Melnar, there are a variety of federal and state laws that prohibit housing discrimination. As far as source of income discrimination, there, there is no specific law that says you cannot deny someone, you know, a housing, or, sorry, a lease based on, they're a voucher holder, as an example. There are a lot of other protections related to housing discrimination. So it's something we can look at the feasibility, if that's the consensus and desire of the council. It does not impact, these ordinances do not impact how much a landlord can charge for rent. They don't impact their tenancy requirements, as an example. They could require, you know, certain types of credit scores and things like that. So these, these ordinances don't address any of those things. It really is just saying that if someone comes to you and they have a source of legal income that would pay for their housing, such as a voucher, I'll just use that as an example, that it would be illegal in the City of Glendale to deny that person access to that rental unit if it was available.
Okay, thank you. And I guess my next question is, has this come before you, or have we seen this happen? Has anybody complained that they weren't able to get housing because they came forth with a source of income that the landlord said, no, we don't think this is going to be a long-term income for you, or whatever?
Mayor and Councilmember Melnar, anecdotally, yes, we do hear from some of our voucher holders that they have difficulty finding a unit to lease because the landlord doesn't want to accept a voucher. Obviously, with accepting a voucher, they have to agree to accept payment from the local entity. The other issue that has come to us, again, anecdotally, so I don't have hard numbers to tell you, like, this is the number of people or the number of landlords that don't participate in our programs. But there are lots of different types of housing vouchers. So there's housing vouchers that we get through HUD for the Housing Choice Voucher Program. But there's also vouchers, housing vouchers, that are issued by the state of Arizona for people who are seriously mentally ill, and other types of vouchers. And so sometimes landlords do make a policy-level decision, which is at their discretion, to say, we're not going to accept any vouchers. And that's currently their right to do that, as long as there's no other types of discrimination taking place. What we counsel our clients on is, when you go to search for a unit, apply for the unit, don't talk about how you're going to pay for the unit, fill out your application, and let that drive the process. And then start talking about, okay, here's, you know, I have a housing voucher, here's the paperwork, and here's the process that you have to fill out. We also focus on building relationships with landlords. So when we do hear from clients who state that a landlord isn't wanting to accept their voucher, we will go that extra mile and make that phone call to the landlord and try to answer any questions they have about the program, ensure that they're going to receive timely payments, talk about the benefits of the program, because it really is that they're going to have a guaranteed payment. So we really focus currently on the relationship-building side of the house and explaining the benefits of participating in our programs to landlords. We have been successful when we've heard from landlords saying that they don't want to accept a voucher and getting them on board. But again, that's anecdotal information, I don't have hard numbers.
Okay, thank you, if I may, Mayor. Along with that line of questioning, then, what is it that a landlord is being resistant to if they are approached with, say, a voucher? Now, that's the only thing that you've said is an example. I don't know of anything else that would be an example of what they wouldn't accept. But why, why is a landlord resistant to accept some of these types of payments? What's the purpose, the reason that a landlord would ever do that?
Mayor and Councilmember Melnar, so in conversations with, so as an example, there's a multifamily association. Some of their clients have properties in multiple jurisdictions throughout the nation even. And sometimes, their client's experience is that the housing authority may not necessarily be easy to work with. So I could only comment on vouchers, you know, as kind of that source of income for housing. And so what they sometimes end up doing is just making a blanket policy and say, well, And so what they sometimes end up doing is just making a blanket policy and say, well, you know what, because we have this problem in X community in X state, we're going to make a blanket policy, we're just not going to, we're not going to engage in that program. So that is some of what we see happening with larger multifamily communities. It doesn't happen all the time, but it has happened where you have a very large conglomerate apartment unit owner or apartment complex owner that is part of a larger management structure that's nationwide, and they make some of those management decisions sometimes.
Okay, thank you. It appears to me that then perhaps the problem is more the relationship with the payer of the voucher than it is the source. And if there's problems, as a business owner, if I have a customer that I cannot get to pay me on a regular basis, or I have problems, or a lot of headaches with, I'm not going to do business with that customer anymore. That's very simple. This law seems to take away that ability from the owner of this property to make that decision, that they're forced to regardless. It seems like it's an administrative problem, not a problem with the payment process or the payment itself. So I don't think I could support this. Thank you.
Ms. Moreno, what's the voucher? Is it a check that they have to then turn around and apply for to get a check? What is it?
Mayor and Council, so we call it a voucher. So essentially, when someone is approved for our program, we give them a voucher, they go out and search for their unit. Once they find a unit and they've passed the landlord's tenancy requirements, then they go through a process where we do an inspection on the unit, make sure that it meets the rent reasonable standards, and that it's a fair market rent. And then we enter into what we call a housing assistance payment directly between the housing authority and the property owner, so that we are paying the tenant's rent directly to the property owner. So that's what it refers to, the voucher, is that sort of that process. When you're a client, you get a voucher to go out and start searching for your housing, and it tells you how much you would qualify for.
So if you're already established with a particular apartment complex or place, you're used to dealing with the people, you're used to seeing how the units are set up, do you continue to do the inspections no matter what? I mean, there are good players, there are bad players. I was at a place Saturday night doing a ride-along that we've all heard about numerous times, and they should be shut down, but that's for another event. But I would think a lot of times when they won't accept the vouchers, a lot of times because maybe they're not, they can't comply with the requirements.
Mayor and Council, that can be an issue. So our program requires that we not only do an initial inspection, but we also have to do an annual reinspection. So if they don't pass on an annual reinspection, we obviously give them an opportunity to come into compliance inspection. And it's very rare that we enter into an abatement process where we withhold payment to a property owner because they haven't corrected a violation. It's very rare that that happens, but that is an option. And that's, again, for the protection of the tenant to ensure that they have a safe unit to live in. But we do, we are required by the federal law to conduct annual reinspections.
Okay, and then fair market value for rent. How close is that to properties that currently are being rented? How, is it within, like, 5%? Is it 20% away? How close is that typically?
So Mayor, it just depends, obviously, on what the property owner wants to charge for the rent. But HUD sets the fair market rents rates every October. They recently increased them fairly significantly over this past year. Our policy currently states that we pay at 110% of what the published fair market rents are because of the market conditions currently in our region. And so I can't answer your question on, you know, how many units are out there that are available at those rental rates. But I can tell you, prior to this most recent update, renters were struggling with finding a unit that they could rent at those fair market rental rates. That has subsided quite a bit because of the increase that HUD made in those fair market rates.
Okay, so that's not typically the problem now, is what you're saying?
That is correct.
Okay, so it seems to me if you're a good player, you got a property that you take care of, and you have somebody willing to guarantee they're going to pay, it seemed like that would be a no-brainer. Could it be just a lot of education from the city required?
Mayor, and again, that's what we currently do if we do encounter a situation like that. And as you'll recall, we also had invested in a landlord liaison program. We've had a little bit of struggles in keeping that position filled, but we do still provide that service. So if there is ever a landlord that wants to participate in our programs, or they have questions about our programs, or are on the fence about our programs, we really work with them to help educate them, help explain the benefits. And we pay on time. You know, our housing authority is very good at ensuring on-time payments, so we don't have any issues on that. So to your point, yes, it is education, it's relationship-building, it's trust. We also, when we're issuing new vouchers, we provide our housing clients with a list of properties that are currently accepting vouchers, so that helps make their housing search a little bit easier. And then also the list of housing developments that are required to accept, are required to maintain periods of affordability.
Thank you. You have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is just a tool that ensures fair and equitable rental rates and fees. Is it just another tool to prevent any type of discrimination practices? And this, any ordinance that you create would not be telling a private owner what they can charge, correct? That's not what we're doing here. Just another avenue for protection is all this is.
Mayor and Councilmember Oldama, that's correct. It would not mandate how much a property owner could charge. It would just say that if the tenant passed their tenancy requirements, so whatever their standard tenancy requirements are, if they pass those tenancy requirements, and the rent that they were charging was at the fair market rent and rent reasonable, that they could not deny that person from renting that unit because they were using a voucher.
I agree. And this is just another tool for us, for Glendale, and there's a lot of federal laws that we follow, and I think it's a good idea. I'd give my consensus for it.
Question?
Thank you. It's kind of, I've been kind of confused and frustrated today because it seems like on these items of interest, we're actually discussing the subject matter, not whether or not we want to discuss the subject matter, learn more about it, and then make decisions. There seem to be, in other communities in our state, a definite need for this ordinance. And I'm not going to suggest that we're not so different from them. The city of Phoenix studied this in depth just recently, just in the last few months, this fiscal, this year, in fact, and approved an ordinance. They studied it much deeper than we've done here today. They learned more about it than I know at hand. You know, we're putting Ms. Moreno in a difficult position, I would say, because she's having to come up with answers for a subject she hasn't done, hasn't been able to do her research on yet, to be able to provide us all that information. So I just want to say, the city of Phoenix, and I'm not big on doing just things because others did it, but I'll tell you why. So the city of Phoenix just went through this process, studied it in depth, and they had a unanimous vote of their city council to adopt an ordinance along this, on this topic that fit their city. And if you've been watching Phoenix lately, unanimity is about as hard to find as a polar bear in Phoenix. This is something that not only Carlos Garcia supported, but so did Sal DeCiccio, after they studied it thoroughly and learned more about it. So I'm just asking us to study it thoroughly, learn more about it, and then consider. There seems to be something here. We have a housing crisis in Arizona. We need to make sure we have all the opportunities available, and also that people aren't using the fact that somebody's on non-wage income, which is typically far more reliable than wage income, but using that as an excuse to not provide them housing that they have a right to have, that they're deserving of, and that they can prove themselves to be good tenants and move on with their lives. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, I don't think it hurts anything to do the research and bring back, I mean, I'm not, I'm not well-informed enough to know how big of a problem this is or isn't. I'd like to ask Ms. Moreno, I mean, do you, you have firsthand knowledge that this is an obstacle for people trying to acquire a place to live in the city of Glendale?
Mayor and Councilmember Tomachov, anecdotally, we've heard from some clients. I can't tell you what percentage of clients, and again, that's only our clients that we are dealing with, with our housing voucher program. Are there other members of our community that are out there that have other sources of income and that are being denied? I don't know that answer. And that's part of what would have to be explored as it relates to this ordinance. What does that look like from a complaint perspective, a complaint processing perspective, an enforcement perspective? What are the resources that would be required in order to actually enforce an ordinance of this nature? And are there alternatives? So that would be all included in this scope of this work.
I would support moving forward then. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion? All right, is there a consensus to move forward with this or not?
Yes.
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 I didn't hear what you said.
Yes.
Yes, okay, there is a consensus to move forward.
Thank you.
Item number four.
Council item of special interest, presentation materials, policy.
Mayor, Members of the Council, here to provide the last staff report is Brent Stotter, Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a council item of special interest from Councilmember Tomachov. In scoping this with her, she wanted the council to have the opportunity to discuss a policy that would require all materials provided for council meetings to be provided at least 24 hours before a meeting. If the timeline was not met, the council member would like the council to consider that the agenda item be postponed. If materials are provided to the council within that timeline, and then subsequently change, an explanation of the change be given when providing the updated materials. And then lastly, as part of her scoping, that emergency or last-minute items that are added to an agenda require communication to the council, explaining when the council will receive the materials. With that, Mayor, I hand it over back to the council for...
Thank you, Mayor. So I, you know, I'd like to be prepared. I think our residents that we're representing expect us to be prepared. And, you know, having the materials 24 hours in advance, I don't think is too much to ask. It's not that frequent that it happens, but it does happen. And one of the real confusing things is to be handed changes here without really understanding what the change is. So trying to figure out what's different from maybe what the, you know, what's been handed to us, and then what the new thing is, if it could be, like, redlined, or somehow we would be able to identify what has changed from what we saw before we got up here. I think for me, it would be really, really helpful. So, and I know there was support for this by a few council members when I voiced it, so hopefully, there still is support for this. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Is there a consensus for this?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. There is a consensus. Yeah? City Manager's report.
Mayor, Members of the Council, just one quick item to update the council on. Today, we officially kicked off with the various partners, the effort to begin the process of renovating the Desert Diamond Arena. So we met with the new owners and their, and their project management people, which of course is ASM Global. And then we have, of course, our project team on board because they're going to be expending some citizen resources, public resources, on the project. But we got it kicked off, and we're real excited about it. We believe that the design documents will take about six to eight months to complete, and they're looking at a total project renovation timeline of about 18 months. One of the things they'll work through is making sure that they can, they don't intend to have to shut down the arena and not be able to do events coming in. So they're going to work very carefully with their project management team to try to, you know, try to work in certain areas that would still allow the arena to be used. That's important only because the arena continues to do incredibly well. As you know, this council supported the idea of moving on from the Arizona Coyotes. And one of the statements that the council, you know, told the public was that we believe that the arena would perform better without, you know, without the Coyotes. And as you know, I mentioned in, or in January, excuse me, that we finished out our record year for the Desert Diamond Arena, had the highest all-time revenues. Typically, we, our share over a 12-month period of the EBITDA that we split with ASM back when we owned the arena was roughly about $1.2 million. We had one year where it was about $1.8 million. We just, we just closed out the books for the first nine months of this year because we had to close out because of the sale transaction. And budget and finance indicated to me today that the amount the city will get over this shortened year of nine months is $2.6 million. And so again, I think this validates the council's decision that we move the arena into the hands of the private sector, we get the benefit of all the activity that it's doing in Glendale. We know that as the arena continues to do better, it's likely meaning that the merchants and the retailers and the hotels in the area are doing well as well. But again, we've kicked that off, and I'll occasionally give you updates in terms of some of the decisions that will be being made. And again, we look forward to working with ASM on this project. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
No report, thank you.
Council item of special interest, Councilmember Oldama.
Thank you, Mayor. I do, in speaking with the residents, we don't see the fruit of the pivot results in downtown Glendale as an alternative to the Glendale Glitters, and overwhelmingly, residents that I've spoken to like to see this event returned. So my item of interest is I'm requesting a plan to be developed to begin returning the Glendale Glitters event. In my item of interest, scope of work is to provide the impacts and the budget needed to hold a Glendale Glitters event again. And the item of interest, scope of work, should include the impact of the construction and timeline to host a Glendale Glitters event, and identify an event footprint that mirrors the original event, and I look forward to meeting with your staff.
Is that all you have?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Hugh?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Melnar?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachov?
Yes, Mayor, I do have an item of interest. I would like to have staff bring back a discussion about unlicensed sober living homes. It has become a very big problem in our community. I'm not, no, I'm not the only one experiencing these issues. According to DHS, only seven of them are licensed with the state. They all must be licensed with the state. So not only are they being, some of these operating without a license, without probably the proper training and other things, there being, there's disruption to our neighborhoods, and also people are being victimized by not getting the treatment that they need and also that somebody is paying for. So I would like to have that sooner rather than later. This has really seemed to escalate recently. So the sooner we can get this back on, back to a workshop, the better. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Ms. Melnar.
I'd like to add my name to that as well, because I think, I think we're all experiencing this in our neighborhoods, but in particular, in my district, there's been a couple of different instances that this has become a major problem. I know Councilmember Tomachov organized a West Valley group of council members that we had a good discussion yesterday. Tomorrow, I'm meeting at the State Capitol with some folks to discuss this issue, and I think we need to really understand it from a city perspective, and I think this will give us an opportunity to really understand what the problem is and the potential that we have to resolve it. So I'd like to add my name to that.
Thank you. I, just last week, actually had a meeting with a state senator on the very, very issue. It's been brought to my attention by a couple of different people. The problem has to be addressed by the state, and the House and Senate both have to really get involved, and I know that they are. I'm glad to see Councilmember Tomachov also knows about this and is willing to move forward. But it affects all of us, this entire city and every district, whether you think it does or not. So I think it's a good item. So I think it's a good item, certainly needs to be researched. Do you have a question?
No, I agree with you. I'd like to go along with Councilmember Tomachoff.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Tomachoff, what else you have?
That's it, thank you. That's it, thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
Thank you, Mayor. As we all know, the, at Management's Recommendation Council is intending to proceed with renovation and expansion of our amphitheater. I would like to request that management prepare a business plan that would include not only the costs and the expenses and revenues that will be associated with operating that, so that we, in future councils, we will know what we're committing future councils to. I would also like to have examples of the types of groups or performers that management expects would be performing in that once it's open. The, using examples from today, I realize it won't be open for a couple of years, but if it, if it were open today, what would we be booking in there under the plan? And also, if there are any successful similar arenas in other cities around the U.S. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing.
Thank you. And again, I'm just going to say one more time, happy birthday to my daughter. Motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. If you guys have it, do have it. Council is recessed.